At this time, I'd like to call the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities meeting for October 16th order. We'd like to welcome all listening or viewing this meeting of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. This meeting is being recorded both video and audio. During the visitors' comments section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address, and then we'll have three minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board need to use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they wish to address the board during the visitor comments section. In addition, there will be a public comments section after the general manager staff reports. During this section, the public may comment on this evening's presentations. Members of the public connected by phone only need to press star nine to indicate that they wish to address the board in the visitors' comments section. Those attending in person should sign up and sign in on the sign up sheet located near the entry to the boardroom. Comments are limited to three minutes and should be directed to the board. As these comments are public, the board cautions visitors not to disclose confidential account information or information on an account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide account information or history in an open meeting. As always, the public may also email or call the BPU with any concerns. The agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website, or if you're using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. As a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Directors, and we will conduct the meeting accordingly. The following rules apply to this meeting. Every person in the room will act respectfully towards each other. Personal attacks and accusations toward any person will not be tolerated. State your specific issue to the board only. We will then determine staff's involvement, and attendees shall refrain from side discussion or individual commentary that interferes with speakers or attendees at this meeting. If side discussion is necessary, please take it outside the boardroom. If any of the rules above are breached during the meeting, that individual is subject to removal from the boardroom. My name is Tom Groneman, Second District and Board President. Other members of our board and staff include General Manager Bill Johnson, David Haley, Member at Large, Position Two, Stevie Wakes, First District and Board Secretary, Brett Parker, Third District, Mary Gonzalez, Member at Large, Position One, Rose Mulvaney Henry, Member at Large, Position Number Three, and Angela Lawson, our Chief Counsel. Please remember to put your phone on silent. Please also be aware that the microphones are very sensitive and can pick up and record comments made anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, would you please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Angela, would you roll call for attendance, please?
Roll call, Groneman.
Here.
Haley.
Present.
Wakes.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda or the regular session, are there any comments, additions, corrections, additions, subtractions?
This Rose, I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Wake second. Okay, roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay, before I ask for approval of the minutes of the regular session of October 2nd, 2024, are there any corrections, additions to those minutes?
This Rose, so moved.
Wake second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay. Approval of the minutes of the regular session of October 2nd.
I move approval of the regular session.
This Rose, second.
Roll call.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
This time I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson for...
Thank you.
...his comments.
Mr. President. Kaylee, is there anyone here wishing to speak? Thank you. So we do have a number of visitors here signed up to speak tonight. We'll get to them first, and then we'll ask about anybody online after this. So first one signed up is Fanny Hill. I'll ask you to come up, state, recite your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, board members.
Evening.
Good evening, community. We had wondered if this meeting was going to be about the pilot. Is that allowed to be discussed, or is that part of the agenda? I haven't seen an agenda.
Agenda is up here, and the pilot is not on the agenda for this evening.
Okay, so you're not going to be discussing the pilot?
No.
We can't say anything about the pilot?
You can, you got, you got three minutes, you can say whatever.
I just want it to be in order.
Yes, ma'am.
It has to be down in order. Okay, well, my thing about the pilot, I really hope we came to a solution that we could all agree with, and I guess they had a change of heart. Everybody was looking for it to be off their bill in October, and the way they said it, we walked it back. That was a nice phrase. And my thing is, everybody here in this room says the pilot should be a small fee of 5%. And my thing is, I've been overpaying the pilot for years, much more than 5%, and I'm kind of wondering, when should I be looking for a refund? You know, when you're overcharged, if you go to the store, any place you're overcharged, you're kind of looking for a refund. So I was wondering if anybody here know what they are doing about my refund? I am hoping for mine, and I'm no longer going to continue to overpay, especially when I'm doing a refund. I'm going to send my bill in with a separate check for the pilot of 5%. They're saying that they can't turn you off of the pilot. So that, that's what I'm going to be doing. I, I don't choose to overpay the pilot when you tell me it's 5%, unless you change your mind. Is that still, should be, should that still be a small fee of 5%? I'd like to hear something about that. So that's why I'm here, just to find out.
Yeah, so, Ms. Fanny, let me, let me address a couple of those points, if I might. I can tell you what this board has said, and that is that the national average for this fee, a pilot fee, a payment in lieu of tax, is between 5 and 6%. And so that, that fact is what it is, and the pilot is actually, it's based in the Kansas statute that has been integrated into our charter ordinance. And that was a decision that was made once upon a time when the charter ordinance for this city was established. And the state statute actually reads that if, if a municipality has a utility, which this municipality does have a utility associated with it, they may choose to collect a payment in lieu of tax instead of other tax, right? So that's a choice that's made by the governmental entity, not the utility. And that's what was chosen so many years ago here in KCK. You've heard a lot of different things, a lot of different places, right? And I'm just, I'm, I'm gonna pull a, is it a get smart? I'm gonna pull just the facts, ma'am, right? Because these are facts, and I have spent a significant amount of time looking at this from a lot of different angles. And I think you know that the BPU does not set what that rate is, and so by statute, it is allowed to be between 5 and 15%. And that rate is set by the Unified Government Board of Commissioners, and every year that is set prior to September 1st, I believe, is the date. Is it October 1? I'm sorry. October 1, and if we don't hear anything different, hey, the rate needs to be different. We understand that a budget was passed by the Unified Government, and that budget includes a 1% decrease in the pilot fee into the 2025 budget for residential customers, down to 10.9%. So the other part of this is that, you know, thi- this payment, as you all know, is, is passed through and get, and, and transferred to the Unified Government. And what the, what the Unified Government, what we've heard from them and their finance people is, that money goes into the City General Fund. And when asked, you know, how that's used, I mean, so it's used to support the departments that are under the city. And two of the biggest departments that are there are the police and fire, so public safety. And I will tell you that in the pilot task, the Pilot Reduction Task Force meetings, I sat in with Dr. Hill and Commissioner Bynum. We actually had the finance people at the UG tell us, because we asked, we're like, what's the allocation? They estimated probably 70%. So 70% of the money that's transferred to the Unified Government is allocated directly to public safety in this community. And so to re, to drastically reduce that fund, that money has to, has to come from somewhere. And I will tell you that for the pilot to come off the bill, that's going to be integrated into, BPU has a couple of options, I suppose, but, you know, our, our residents and our businesses in KCK, we, we exist based on the fees we collect for the services that we provide to this community. So this community actually pays for the cost of this utility. Not unlike the taxes that we pay as residents and businesses in this community, we pay to the local government, that supports our local government operations, right? So if the pilot comes off of the bill as it is now, it's going to either be integrated into the rates that our ratepayers pay, right, which is a lot, a lot less transparent than it is today, or it's going to be added onto the bill in a different way, perhaps through a rider, right, which, which we certainly have the authority to do. So, you know, I can't speak for anybody at the Unified Government, and I can only speak for myself as a board member at BPU. But I'm just trying to, to actually offer an education to our public as to how this, how we got where we are and, and the reality of what it means if this, this tax will be, this, this fee will be collected one of two ways. It's going to be collected through a pilot fee, or it's going to be collected as a direct tax from our community members, one way or another. And I'm, I'm, again, I'm just trying to be brutally honest with you.
I appreciate that, Ms. Rose, and we do need more education about that, and I do have lots of questions, but I know others have questions. I will save them until the 21st meeting and send them to you, because that's the first I heard they can charge just as much as 15% for a pilot fee. Because there was a time, it was a franchise fee. I won't get into that now, but on the 21st community meeting, I would like to discuss that.
Well, and I, I will just, one, one last thing. So I dug a little bit further into, because everybody likes to compare to the closest utility we have here, the largest utility we have here, the investor-owned utility, Evergy, right? So I did a little research one weekend, because I didn't have anything else to do, which I think is all, is a lie, everybody knows that, but, but, uh, but...
Not a week like that?
But what I spent time doing is I, in 2023, Evergy had a rate case that they brought before the Kansas Corporation Commission. And how their, their rate cases work is they have a hearing, right? So they filed testimony in support of, here's where we need our rates to be. And so I found the, the person in Evergy who filed the testimony on their behalf that explained what they do with regard to the property taxes that they pay in the state of Kansas. And what they do is they, as I suggested earlier, they actually incorporate those property taxes into their base rates. So Evergy would be, it is no different. You don't see a pilot fee on their bill, but their property tax payments are being incorporated into the rates that their ratepayers pay. So I just want to be clear about, hey, we don't see this there. You do, you definitely see a franchise fee on their bill, for sure. Don't see one on BPU's bill, right? But, so those two things are there. I'm happy to, you know, talk about this ad nauseam. I know we've gone way over the three minutes you're allotted, but I think it's really important, because you've asked a very important question. And I want to make sure that we give, or at least I give, the answer, because I've spent a lot of time looking at this issue lately, as you can imagine.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And all that getting, getting understanding. I'm just trying to get an understanding, and I'm sure the community wants an understanding as well. Thank you, Ms. Rose. Appreciate you very much and for everything you do.
Thank you, Ms. Fanny.
Thank you. Next customer signed up to speak is Louise Lynch. You can state your name, address for the record, and you have three minutes.
I don't really think I need a mic, but, you know. So yes, Rose, thank you for that, and I am Louise Lynch, Kansas City, Kansas. So I too want to talk a little bit about this BPU pilot fee and the UG and the BPU back and forth. The first thing I want to clarify, as far as for me and my understanding that most of the people who are struggling to pay these bills, is that we don't just want the pilot taken off the bill geographically, okay? We're looking for relief, right? We don't want to just move from here to there and say, well, it's off, but guess what? You're gonna have to pay it here. That's ridiculous. On October 1st, when the administrator announced that he was going to be taking it off the bill, and the mayor went behind him and got everyone excited, they forgot to tell us, so who's going to pay that? They didn't come out and say, guess what? It's still going to be you. They didn't say that. They just let you believe that you're gonna get this relief, that they're gonna let go of $37 million. Well, that's ridiculous. There are a lot of things that are ridiculous of being, going on in this county that just makes me sick to my stomach. But one of the things I want to say is, I want the people to know, we have to pay our fair share of the utilities we use, right? We don't like the rates, we don't like all these fees, but we still have to pay them if we want to have electricity and water. Unlike, the UG is not paying their fair share. They are getting close to 14, between 13 and 14 million dollars worth of services for free on your backs, the backs of the residents. That has got to stop. Imagine if we took 14 million dollars and subtracted it from the 37 million. It might be a doable pilot, right? I mean, that would bring it down significantly. But we haven't heard them do that. They had a budget, right? They had a budget meeting. Instead of giving us relief, they raised the stormwater fee. They raised the wastewater fee. They raised the trash. They raised the recycling.
You have 30 seconds.
And did not even give us a moment's worth of compassion. There's an article out today by, on KSHB, read it. I also gave an interview at 6:00 PM going into this more fervently, because we are being lied to. And there is no transparency when it comes to the UG in letting us know what is the real deal. They have promised to meet with the BPU, and they have not done so once this year.
That is three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next customer signed up to speak tonight is Vanessa Robinson.
Pass on speaking.
She's on pass, okay, all right. After Vanessa is Kenneth Robinson.
He's also passing.
He's also passing, okay, thank you. And then, uh, the next person is Thomas Gordon. If you can state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thomas Gordon, Montauk County. Good evening.
Evening.
I just wanted to have something cleared up. I got an email earlier saying that the BPU was up for sale. Is that a myth? Is that true?
You're talking to the wrong...
The BPU is considering to be sold.
The, the only way that BPU could be sold is if the Unified Government agrees to do so, and we haven't heard anything.
Okay, that's good. Because when I read that, it made me think that everybody was going to get a healthy parachute financially and abandon ship and leave us stuck with all these taxes and pilots and unresolved issues. So the BPU is not for sale.
I have not been made aware of that.
None of, none of us have been...
Nobody told us it is.
But that's kind of encouraging news. As far as the pilot is concerned, I sit on the board, on that task force with, with Rose.
Or sat.
Yeah.
Because I don't think we've, present, I don't think we've present tense sit...
We.
We used to sit on it. There you go.
And it was agreed that, you know, the BPU for the relief for the senior citizens was not going to make that much of a difference as far as how much money they were going to actually be losing, and that they were going to phase out the pilot tax, and there was no talk about it ever being integrated or, you know, reintroduced in another form. So I kind of agree with what's been said so far, is that we've been deceived in believing that it was going to be total relief and not to be brought back in another form. My question is, we bring about the problems, but I don't hear anyone talking about any potential solutions. And as the Board of the Public Utilities, we come here to express our anger and our disappointment, looking to the board for some type of solution and resolutions. So when we talk about the things that bother us as a public, we expect and want from the board to bring some type of relief for us. And when we can get that, then I think we can be a unified government again.
You have 30 seconds.
I look forward to seeing that happen here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gordon, just so that you're aware, that many efforts have been made by the board and the general manager to try to work things out by meeting with the mayor as well as the commission to try to do that. We are still waiting for that to happen. There has been one meeting prior to me, as you know, my campaign was about communication, 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 and we have not yet met. So those efforts have been ongoing, and unfortunately, we have not reached that time, as been stated previous by others, that we're still waiting for the opportunity to be able to work things out.
In my closing 30 seconds here...
That was time.
I understand that, I understand that the fact that you're governed by some type of a charter, then I think if you look into the charter and find out what the impediments of being able to remove this, then I think we can move forward, because otherwise, they have no obligation to do anything. So I think that's where we need to start at, with the charter.
Real quick, Mr. Gordon, thank you very much. Two things in response to your comments. One, in, after a Unified Government Commission meeting in early May, there was, there was significant support among the commissioners at that meeting to actually re-fire back, fire our task force back up. And so when we talk about trying to get to solutions and offering solutions, I, I will tell you that in the middle of May, I believed that that task force was going to be revived and that we were going to, as elected official to elected official, plus, you know, some non-elected officials there, put our heads together and try to come up with some proposed solutions. And that did not occur. And I, I cannot recall and revive the task force on my own, unfortunately, and BPU cannot do that on its own, so, so we couldn't do that. We're, you know, we, we have tried to, as, as two elected bodies, we have tried to, you know, tried, tried to, to make some headway there, and we haven't been able to do it. So it's unfortunate, but that, that's a fact.
If you would contact me and give us the outline, there's a group that I'm affiliated with, maybe we can come up with something to support you in getting that restarted again, so.
Yeah, well, and I, I did want to reiterate what I think, Mr. President, you said in our work session, for those who could not attend it. There is a special session of the Unified Government Commission tomorrow evening at 5:30 PM, usual place.
It's on the fifth floor, I think.
On the fifth, what's it, on the fifth floor. I don't know. It's, it's, there's a notice, public notice out there, and the subject matter is to discuss the BPU pilot. So I will tell you, the BPU board was not invited to that meeting. So it's not like a joint meeting between the two bodies. It's just a special session that was set by the Unified Government.
That's tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
The public is not welcome to attend. We can train, we cannot be in person, and we cannot comment. So so many certain people are going to be allowed to...
Your representatives, your commissioners.
But not us.
The, the public would be allowed, and I, I can't comment on whether or not there'll be comments, but the public is allowed in City Hall at the board meetings.
At any rate, you have the information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kaylee, is there anyone else? While she's bringing this up, I'm gonna hand this back to you. And if there's anybody else wanting to speak, if you can sign up over there. Next one up is Carmen Brooks. If you can come up, state your name, address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, I'm Carmen Brooks. I live at 2609 North 18th Street, and my lights are out, and I was trying to get them on. There's no one down there to answer any questions and get my lights on. Uh, just a day late. I was two days late. I'm supposed to pay my regular bill plus my arrangement, and I was paying them, but I was just two days late with that one regular payment, and my lights had turned out. And I'm trying to do the best I can, and I'm on social security. I'm retired with one income. I'm trying to find a job, but I can't make too much, or I won't get my social security. Then I can't live, I can't eat. You can't buy your groceries like that, and no one here to help me, no one down there in that office to listen to me to get my lights put back on, and it's cold. And I have to go find me someplace else to stay. And I've been living there for years, and I was just a little bit late. It's just terrible, we can't communicate with this board, with this electrical, this electric company. They don't have no compassion for the people. It's the Board of Utilities for the, for the people, not just for this board to get, to accept money and take the money and not do the service to the people. It just, it hurts. I mean, we can't get any, I couldn't get no answers. And I could have been, had my lights on this evening, but making all those calls, all you do is hear the machine dial this number, push this number, do this, pay this. But if you don't, I mean, they get on there and they say something. And yes, I could have went to some, but they have no, all your business. Who wants to tell somebody all their business on the telephone? That's, uh, degrading for a senior citizen. We're senior citizens and we should be treated better. That's why it needs to have, you need to have compassion, have people down there to wait on people, not no answer machines and pushing buttons. That's, that's my, I just want to see something happen to get some human being treating.
So.
Not no machines.
Were you able to make contact with customer service?
Haven't, I don't have.
We do have, uh, we do have a customer service in the room.
Okay.
If you could, uh, if you could talk to her, uh, I don't know anything about the status of your account, but I mean, there are.
Yes.
The utility does make, uh, does have money available for hardship and utility assistance.
But they want to know too much business.
Okay, well.
That's not fair. I shouldn't have to tell all my business because I need help.
Okay.
And I have solar panels and I'm not getting my full, my full credit for my solar.
That is the three minutes.
Five hundred megawatts of power and I'm getting like three hundred credits. Or one hundred and twenty-five credits. That's not fair. I want you to look into that and get some people down there to help me that can talk to me, not no machine.
Okay, well, we have, we have somebody in the room that could, that can help you today, okay? Janetta, if you can, uh.
And let me say, Ms. Brooks, uh, I appreciate you reaching out today. I did try to connect you. I mean, I do appreciate that you did call. I had hoped that you would have been able to get through to customer service to resolve this issue today in a timely manner. But again, feel free to continue to reach out. I do appreciate that. I thought we had it connected. I thought we had you back connected.
Didn't want to tell them all my business.
I appreciate that.
So I got some money from my daughter anyway.
Well, okay, you don't have to tell us, you don't have to tell us all your business right now either. Okay, but I just wanted to tell that, and you will, if you speak with Ms. Henson, then hopefully you'll get everything squared away.
And Ms. Brooks, again, is also, thank you so much. And I'd like to know what the breakdown is. I, I really don't believe that we should have that problem within our customer service where a person is trying to reach and pay their bill without being cut off and cannot reach anybody. I need to know what that problem is. That should not be a problem. Please, 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 uh, please let us know how we can get that resolved, because I want, I want that issue resolved. Hey, Seth.
Well, and let me share, part of it is, there's no place, as the board knows and as we know, where someone can actually come and talk to a live person at the lobby. That's an ongoing concern that can be alleviated and concerned if we reopen, you know, our lobby during a regular amount of time. I just want to point that out. That's part of the problem.
So for the record, for the public, the lobby is open, okay? If you call and make an appointment, you can come in and speak to a representative.
You need to, you'd be able to have it walk in.
Before we get into any type of comments about any customer bill, I want to make sure that we have a chance and I'm brought up to speed on where these issues are, okay? I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anybody else sign up to speak? Uh, Gregory Sims, next. I'm sorry?
He's passing. I'm next. Bobby Josenberg.
Oh, okay, he's passing and you're.
Make a long story short, I ain't gonna be for one minute.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. You're, uh, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Bobby Josenberg, eleven thirty Troop Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one oh four, apartment three oh six.
And you have three, you have three minutes.
We got a pay site that y'all allow us to pay. Y'all steady asking for this. Here's a receipt to prove it. So who took the money? Then I want to say what y'all have said. Let it happen for us. Y'all might not know living where I now, you know? I wish I didn't. So make a long story short. Do it if y'all want to be treated, like we want to be treated because we're dying. Come on, I promise. I want to beat the customer service. Here's the receipt. And if you sixty thousand older people in this room, you call, they customer service paying me bills in two days and they give me a response that it's paid. For this, out there in my, that's been so good. This patch.
So did Janetta step out of the room?
Okay.
Is there, is there anybody else from customer service back there? Abby, could you take her out?
And, and what, and ma'am, ma'am, what is that? I mean.
I have received, we paid on what, the third or the first of the month? And y'all ain't got it? Y'all steady texting us that we owe this? No. Uh-uh. She's paying me. She paid her bills. She got a receipt. I was telling her to provide. They told her she got a receipt, but she ain't got nobody to provide it to.
Okay, all right.
Abby, can you get with, get with, uh, Ms., thank you.
Miss Bobby?
Next customer signed up to speak is Ty Gorman. You state your name, address for the record in three minutes.
All right, thank you. I'm Ty Gorman, two eight four three Parkwood Boulevard, six six one oh four. Um, I wanted to speak to the same thing everybody's talking about up here, uh, here in the public comment section and just the, the issue behind all this is that the UG doesn't want to get people to pay progressive taxes and they're putting not only the pilot fee, but the stormwater and the trash on a bill that shuts off water and power if you don't pay it every month, and that's wrong. And that everybody in this room knows that, everybody up here knows that and has said it out loud. But, uh, it, it's real confusing over on the UG side. Nobody's saying that. People are saying the pilot's off the bill, which it isn't really. So, you know, I want to say on one side, BPU uh, has been somewhat, you know, has been for a little while now, fighting for the people to get those fees off. I hope you redouble those efforts, make it even louder, say it louder, um, and say it clear as far as, uh, you know, we're giving tax breaks to the wealthiest corporations, developers, people who come in and buy land. And we're pretending like if we don't give all those tax breaks, people aren't going to invest in this county. And that's just not true anymore, because the prices are so high over the county borders on, uh, either side. So we need to get out of that mentality on the UG side and actually charge the people who are able to pay for these fees. All right, so that's one thing, but and I also want to say that BPU as an institution is capable of bringing in more value and wealth to this community than it has been, or than any of these other organizations are. Evergy exists to take money and give it to its shareholders. They do that partially by paying a bunch of politicians to get a bunch of tax breaks, as a lot of corporations do everywhere. That's just part of it. So, you know, Evergy is going to, uh, you know, pay some of these taxes that you mentioned, Rose, on the, um, on the property side, but they also get state tax breaks on a bunch of other things, so they don't pass them on to the customers. Whereas here in Wyandotte County, we're putting taxes on the bills to pass on to the customers to make flat fees, because they don't have that kind of political clout. So, you know, I think that BPU can, uh, can, can talk more about how as a utility that is owned by the people and not-for-profit, it can act as a loan agent, it can act as a grant agent, it can bring in federal dollars for clean energy and through home energy efficiency and investment to the tune of a hundred million dollars from state government. Uh, we've talked to the staff about this and I think the staff's in agreement that we want to do this, uh, but there's not a lot of capacity or knowledge right now that I've been able to find, uh, and there's not a lot of opportunity coming, um, uh, or being sought by BPU staff at this point. And I'd like to bring the community into that process and make that a, a task of the board to raise that issue up a hundred million dollars statewide. It can be invested in homes. I'll just say the solar program's the same thing. BPU can act as a loan agent. BP, there's a whole, uh, really clear way to do that for municipal utilities that can bring, again, millions and millions of dollars valued to the community. So, uh, just ask y'all to broadcast the value that BPU can bring to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just a quick comment or two. So, uh, Mr. Gorman, I think you're well aware through many of our conversations and you've had your three minutes, through many of our conversations on what efforts BPU is, is trying to uh, go through in terms of securing federal and state dollars that, that would come in and directly support this community. The solar project you talked about, we made an effort to go in and get, uh, federal dollars to help build solar that would also provide benefit directly back to the low-income citizens of the community by lowering their utility bills around twenty to twenty-five percent. The state of Kansas was unsuccessful in collecting that. So the, the entire state didn't qualify, which means there was no dollars left for BPU, okay? There is other federal dollars that's coming in that everybody in the room can take advantage of when those dollars become available in terms of the weatherization, the energy efficiency type dollars that won't come through BPU, but it'll go directly to the citizens. So the citizens can take advantage of that to try to offset the higher costs and, and, and really make improvements to your home, your appliances, et cetera, if the citizens choose to do that themselves. Once those dollars become available and we know that, uh, the process in which all of our citizens need to work through, I made a commitment, and BPU's made a commitment to make sure that that information is provided to the community, so you know where to go to get that information and to make application for that. I'm not aware today where that program is and when those dollars will become available. So I just want to make sure that we're setting the record straight on, on all this. Only thing, other thing I would say is, BPU plays a very active role in economic development activities around this community in terms of bringing in new revenue, trying to help all of our customers and a lot of customers to provide jobs in this community through all of their efforts to keep them here and keep a lot of our citizens employed in Wyandotte County. So we play a huge role in working with unified government and trying to bring in even more revenue, uh, through all of those efforts. Next is C.C. Mink. I'll ask you to come up, speak. State your name, address for the record. Three minutes.
C.C. Harland, Wyandotte County. So the first thing I want to ask is, because I'm going to stay on this, when are y'all going to consider a new law firm who is not advising you to crush all over our constitutional right to redress this board? I am sick of being cut off, talking about three minutes, two minutes, your three minutes are up. No, your three minutes are up, ma'am, because you really need to find a new employment. I'm gonna come here every week and talk about you, ma'am. Anyway, I want to talk about the pilot fee. Uh, David Johnston said that it was illegal.
Ms. Harland, excuse me.
I'm talking about the pilot fee.
I heard what you said and you are not allowed to do personal attacks on anybody that's.
Y'all personally attack us every damn day with y'all's, uh, utility bills.
That's enough.
This is ridiculous.
That's enough.
Okay, well, I was moving on to the pilot fee and you interrupted me.
Because you dropped the rule.
David Johnston said that it was illegal for y'all to charge us a pilot fee individually and y'all should have raised the rates to compensate. Then the mayor and y'all come back and say it was premature and we couldn't afford to take it off, when the fact is this, it's illegal, so it shouldn't be there. Y'all need to do something about it and we're going to make sure that you do. So I'm going to tell the crowd that there is a form in CO Box Office that you fill out and complain about consumers. Y'all need to fill that out. And anybody who is elderly, y'all need to fill it out and also include the, um, acts against, um, elderly and disabled people. Because what they're doing is neglecting abuse on this community.
Rob, is there anyone online wanting to speak? Okay, okay. Did she just, did she just come in or?
No, she's, uh.
No, 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 hold on, hold on. Do you have, is, so one more time, is there anybody else wanting to speak tonight? If you've been here for a while, okay.
That's the one over here.
Sign up.
So after, after this request, if it's okay for the board, we're going to move on, uh, because this is.
We'll close down the public.
We're going to close down the public other than the person on the phone.
I'm all right.
Okay, okay, we'll get to it. I'm, I'm talking about people here. All right, so this is the last, last two, right, that's here present today. The screen, you can state your name, address for the record, and, uh, you have three minutes.
Good evening.
Evening.
Uh, I've been a resident here all my life. I'm a senior citizen. Um, my bill is like two hundred and forty dollars every month. And I have a little, like a little bongo, five-room, six-room house, low ceilings. Uh, I don't understand it. And I don't make payments. I just pay the whole bill. And I'm, I'm a senior citizen. I'm on disability. I'm struggling. Uh, they said they was going to take this pilot, pilot out this month. I haven't seen it. And I would like to know, why ain't they coming in the back to read the meters no more?
I think we have an automated system that can collect that.
Well, I just don't understand. I need my bill, uh, slackened because I'm not even using a lot of lights. I'm also in my room. I'm not even in the kitchen too much. I'm not in the living room. You know, I'm, I unplug stuff.
Have you spoken to customer service to have them take a look at your bill and offer any suggestions?
They ain't gonna go down. They, they, they.
We have representatives here in the room, so.
I want to talk to them. They here?
Yes, yes.
Oh, her, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and.
You, Ms. Green.
And we want to help you, Ms. Green, but, you know, hopefully they can, uh, they can provide some answers to me, too. Uh, last one signed up to, in person is Ms. Watson, Mrs. Watson. State your name, address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
My name is Sylvia Watson. I live in Wyandotte County. And I see, my heart goes out to a lot of the Wyandotte Countyans because of the people that live here. We're being suppressed. We're being bombarded with all of these charges on the BPU that a lot of us cannot afford. And the thing that I think that we have the most problem with, there's no compassion for us. If it was not for the senior citizens that would be here, Wyandotte County would be gone a long time ago. We're the ones that's holding this county up and we have been. The problem that I have is with this storm drain. That is a big issue for me, because it appears that you guys are nickel ninety-eight enough, you know? Every time you turn around, there is a charge on our bill as if the utility bill is not high enough. And then we're getting all these charges. I feel like we're being slammed with all of these charges. Now, I have two lots, two grassy lots, and they're charging me four dollars and fifteen cents per lot. Now, a lot of people may not think that that's a lot of money, but if you average it up, it's like ninety-some dollars a year. And when people are on fixed incomes and on social security, that is a lot, considering all the other bills that we have to be responsible for. I don't understand why we're being charged for this storm drain when I have two grassy lots. Now, I look at it this way. If God doesn't charge me for the rain that comes down, why should the BPU? Thank you.
Ms. Watson?
Ms. Watson.
Ms. Watson.
Ms. Watson.
Quick question, uh, have you contacted the unified government to ask? Have you contacted the Unified Government to ask you, ask them about the stormwater fees and why, why you're having to pay that?
Well, what I've been told, okay, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but the last person I want to contact is the, uh, BPU and ask them about anything, because a lot of people can attest to that we feel like we're getting the runaround. We feel like we're not being treated fairly. So we kind of look at you guys as the enemy. So why would I go in enemy territory to ask questions that I'm not getting fair answered about?
Not asking about BPU, this is not a BPU.
BP, BPU.
But...
I know, BPU say that we can't do anything because Wyandotte, I mean, you...
Watch this, Ms. Watson, this is not a BPU charge.
Okay.
It is a Unified Government charge.
Well, you, you, well, you guys say we own each other, U-G, BPU, back and forth, I don't know. I'm just saying that I don't think it's fair. I don't care who's producing the bill. I don't think it's fair for the resident to be charged a storm drain for the lot, for the vacant lots that they have. These are two vacant lots, right on either side of my house, and I don't, I think it's unfair to be charged for that. I'm a resident, I'm not a business, because what I was told, the reason why they were charging the, the amount was because, uh, they were charging for, um, uh, commercial, because they were having the storm drain.
You have thirty seconds.
I'm residential.
So I'll tell you what, we will, before you leave, we will give you a number for the Unified Government to call. Hopefully, they will answer all your questions. This fee shows up on the BPU bill that we collect for the Unified Government and give it to them. They determine what the rate is, they tell us how much to put on there. The only thing we do is collective charge, just collect the fees, and then give it back to the Unified Government.
Okay, and that's why we blame you guys, because it's on the BPU bill.
Yes.
And we just feel like we're getting a runaround. That's why I feel like we're being slammed, you know, the term slamming, just throwing charges on our bill, you know, at will. And that's why I feel that way about it, because you look around, we're being charged for everything. They used to then charge you for trash pickup. They do now, years ago, so... And that's BPU doing that. Am I right or wrong?
You're wrong.
For trash pickup? So, so UG charges for trash pickup and all of this, but you guys are the fall guys, right?
Right.
So you're going to be in trouble then, because it's on my BPU bill.
We are.
It's not on UG's bill. So, you know?
And we've tried to get the bills separated, and, uh, that didn't go very, very well.
No, because UG don't want to be blamed for anything. They passing the buck.
Right, exactly.
And you guys are suffering for it. So you of all people should be trying to get rid of this, because everybody is coming to you at these meetings and, and angry with you guys because of that.
Exactly. Thank you.
Here we are.
I just need to share that when I made the presentation to the Unified Government about all the fees added on the BPU bill and BPU getting blamed about it, they reminded me that the UG owns BPU.
Okay, uh, let's move on to, uh, Dr. Hall.
Dr. Hall, I know that I enabled your ability to speak and then removed it from you, and I'm sorry, there were two other people in the room that wanted to, that needed to speak. So if you'll re-raise your hand, I can re-enable your ability. Thank you. You don't need to unmute.
Thank you, and I understand there's a lot of people there. Good evening.
Uh, if you could state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
All right. Buenas noches, uh, good evening. My name is Dr. Alma Rosas Hall. I live in Kansas City, Kansas. Um, again, thank you for taking some time. I have a lot of questions and also some, uh, real quick. You're right, Mr. Wakes, according to BPUG leadership, uh, BPU is owned by Unified Government, which according to some statements, you are the, um, election, uh, fees, your collective fees for our UG, which leads me to, um, ask about the softwares that are being used by the Unified Government and also BPU. Why is it too difficult for, um, for, for the collection pieces to get processed correctly? If BPU is owned by Unified Government, then why do we have two different identities? Why can't we just focus on merging or consolidating leadership such as, uh, HR, CEOs, all those things, and leave the labor force to do the same, to process and do the daily task as usual? I feel that that would save a lot of money to our community and also clarify a lot of the issues that we're having as a community here. I do feel very sorry to those parents, elderly ladies, and, and the community of limited language is that, um, feel that there's no compassion when they're trying to advocate for their utility fees. It is very difficult and very, um, discerning to see that happen. I have been a witness of that. So I'm feeling that Unified Government and BPU needs to come into a consensus about how to save and hear our community's concerns. That you have the ball and I take the ball issues is making our community go into a bigger debt. We cannot afford to live here. Some of us are, it's very easy to move on and go somewhere else. But I, it is still, a, a, is, the issues will still stay here. Mr. Johnson, you stated that you have a lot of community services, you bring a lot of businesses here.
You have thirty seconds.
And to you, all board members and some of you that are listening from UG, when are you going to bring businesses that provide a livable wage to our community? Every business that comes to our, our community, we give them money, and all the, all the, all the jobs are low-paying jobs, hourly jobs, and then the upper-level management, those people don't live here. So if we're going to talk about how to...
That was three minutes.
...and how to improve, we need to sit together at the table and take care of our community, because we pay your bills and we cannot afford them anymore. Both identities need to come together and help us out. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate all that you do in a nice way.
I don't think so.
Um, Dr. Hall, this is, uh, Rose Mulvaney Henry. And, um, I, I actually have a question for you, if I, if I might, based on your comments.
Ma'am, I... You hear me? Because I got...
Yeah, I can. Sorry, Rob, Rob just re-enabled that. So could, would you, could you hear me? I, I've got a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, when you talk about, you know, the integration of BPU into the Unified Government, do you have any data to support, um, the, I, I guess, the, the dollars that would be saved by doing that?
Well, if we look at your top-level management, just between two C, uh, two administrators, you would be saving about a million dollars, because you have one person that makes quarter of a million dollars, and then additionally with benefits and retirement and all that, it's, it's money. And then you look at the UG, it's also another one. So based on two positions, we can utilize that data, ma'am.
Okay, and so, um, from, from an IT perspective, um, are you aware of the two ransomware attacks that the Unified Government system suffered in twenty twenty-two and, uh, earlier in twenty twenty-four?
Ma'am, as many of us in this community, we were victims of that. So yes, I am aware. But also, I am aware that half of the United States and global gets attacked by fiberware. Yes, ma'am.
Right, and so, and so the, the danger to the systems of utility that provide your power and water, um, you understand that the need to segregate those systems is actually really, really important um, for us to be able to do our jobs at, at the utility, right?
Did you, um, let me make a clarifying statement, ma'am. I'm speaking about the leadership, not the, the people that run the, the labor force. We can have two different sense, like billing. We, you have a, uh, billing or customer service. We have UG, a customer service. Why can't we merge those positions that would save a lot? You can also divide those IT positions, because you have one where it's utilities, and then you have another one where you carry the daily businesses tasks.
Right. Um, I, I appreciate the discussion. Thank you, Dr. Hall.
No problem, and thank you for asking and for your time.
Rob, is there anyone else?
Sarah Lynch, Wyandotte resident. I didn't sign up to speak earlier because I didn't feel the need to speak, since many of my sentiments have already been echoed through some of our earlier speakers. But in listening to everything, it just occurs to me, it's not been said yet tonight that BPU is a municipal utility, correct? That means it's owned by the people and not by the government, correct? So when it comes to trying to separate these bills, what is it that the UG is talking about that it's difficult to separate the bills, because they're treating you guys like a bill-collecting agency and not like a municipal utility? Never mind the implications that that may have for taxes from the UG, but what, what is it that they're giving you guys that's so difficult of saying, "These are our fees, these are your fees"? They treat you guys like they're, like you're an extension of the UG, which is probably where Ms. Mayne goes on about the conflict of interest and legal representation, though that's a related yet different conversation. What is it that you guys are being told about that is difficult for the separation? And how can we, as the residents, um, help broker this in, help, help this, make this happen?
Thank you, Ms. Lynch, for your, your, your words. I, I recognized in the discussion two issues uh, with the separation of the bill, uh, which were not resolved during the discussion. Those two elements included, number one, who would pay for it? Because there's a cost involved with separating the bill. Then, uh, number two, uh, the, the matter was, how would the UG collect their money uh, without a consequence to the customer, uh, to, to, to force or, or, or pretty much force them to make the payment? So I recognize those two, is they were afraid that they would not get those funds that they depend on to pay, to pay for their operations. And then they were concerned also about, um, the other matter that I mentioned initially, uh, which was, uh, who would pay for the cost of separating the bill?
What cost is there in separating the bill and putting it on two different sheets of paper, so that one does not affect the other? Also...
Thirty seconds left.
Thank you. Am I incorrect in my understanding that the pilot was initially supposed to be a temporary thing that has just been allowed to go on all this time? At which point, doesn't that burden land on the UG to separate, to figure out where they're going to get that money from, if not from the utility company of the people?
So the pilot has been around for decades.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I, I haven't seen anything to say that it was a temporary thing and it would expire at any, at any point, so... And if you look at, uh, many other municipal utilities, there is a pilot that's also as part of their bill. And what even some cities are doing is, is putting out statements similar to us. They're putting out statements that they want that pilot to be transparent on the bill, so that the customers understand, you know, what they're paying for. So it's not part of your, your normal electric service, it's not part of your normal water service, it's not part of the trash, the water pollution, uh, stormwater, anything else. It is a separate line item altogether. So for BPU, that, that tell, that helps us tell you, you know, we're collecting this not for money that BPU uses, it's money that we are collecting and transferring to the Unified Government along with the other charges that they have on our bill. So it don't help our operations one, one way or the other, but it does help the Unified Government operations. In terms of your other question, I have yet to see anything as to why the bills can't be separated.
So are they charging you guys the pilot, or are you guys, are they charging us the pilot through you guys?
They're charging you the pilot that we collected. On the first, on the first of October, they send us a letter, by, by the first of October, saying, "This year, or this coming year, we're going to, we want you to collect..." It has been eleven point nine percent. They reduced it this year to ten point nine percent of your gross revenues. And then it goes further to say, and then on the, by the tenth of every month, "You're going to remit that money that you've collected"
Mm-hmm.
"on the pilot to the city treasury." So at once a month, we, we collect the money and we send it over to the city treasury. We're just a collection. And they, by charter ordinance, the, the charter that they operate under, that we all operate under, that's the way it's set up. And we have no, we have, we don't, we don't set it. We have no, we have nothing to, to do with it or say about it, other than to collect it. And then if we don't pass it over to them, we can get, we can personally be sued.
But how, how can they personally sue you if you guys share the same legal counsel?
Let me just share.
That was the three minutes.
Okay, let me just share again, uh, and I can't, can't speak to, to that, other than what Bill spoke about, the reduction. Um, there was nobody on the commission today, that was on the commission in around two thousand and ten, I believe, two thousand and seven, two thousand and ten. At that time, Mike Kane was the only, is the only commissioner that can really speak to it personally, uh, from his own experience. There was an agreement made that they would raise the pilot a certain percentage, and then after the, after a certain amount of time, they would lower it, um, back to what it was before they raised it. Uh, and it was only like, I think, a couple of percentage. Well, they, they never did, uh, uh, lower it, and, uh, um, it was never brought back to the table. Uh, but it continued to increase until we get to this now, eleven point nine percent.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rob, I think that's the last... Okay, thank you. So, Mr. President, we'll shut down this section and move into the IRP public comment section. I, uh, think we have people that have submitted, uh, at least one person submitted a presentation that I want to make sure that we give them time to, uh, speak to, I think you're asked for fifteen minutes, if I'm, okay? Then after we get to what I, what I do know has been submitted, I'll ask Andrew to come up to talk about anything else that I may not know about.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Commissioners and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Kerry Gooch. I'm here representing an organization called Kansas for an Affordable Future. Uh, Kansas for an Affordable Future is a nonpartisan organization dedicated to building, um, and empowering people on fixed income to have access to economic prosperity, environmental stewardship, and to support the people that have made Wyandotte County into the county that it is today. In an effort to bring the best information we could to the BPU, uh, we turned to an organization called the Rocky Mountain Institute to do an analysis of the BPU's Integrated Resource Plan. RMI is recognized as an expert in utility economics and wholesale system thinking around the country. Um, RMI's full report looks at the twenty-year plan that the BPU staff and the Black and Beach Consultants put together to add more context around the opportunities to enhance BPU's, uh, programming process. Uh, we look forward to working with BPU more in the future on this project. Uh, but with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague on the screen, Tyler Fitch, who, uh, leads this report.
Thank you, Kerry, and, uh, thank you, board members, for making time for, for this presentation. Uh, am I audible in the room? Okay? I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Yes.
And your name, please?
Of course, yeah. Uh, I'm, my name is Tyler Fitch, uh, and I live in Durham, North Carolina. All right. Uh, and one more thing, I want to thank the staff that have, uh, that have put this together and make this, uh, this Zoom run. I know that mixed meeting, uh, format is never easy, and, um, I'm very appreciative of the work that you all put in to make this work. Um, and I'll just go ahead and say sort of next when I, when I want to move through this slide. So, yeah, this is great. Uh, so, hi all, my name is Tyler Fitch. I'm a manager with RMI's Clean Energy Planning Practice. And you already heard a little bit from, uh, from Kerry, but, uh, RMI is an independent nonprofit founded in nineteen eighty-two, and we, we focus on transforming global energy systems through market-driven solutions to secure a clean, prosperous, and zero-carbon future for all. So just to give some context about what we did here, uh, we partnered with Sierra Club and Kansas for an Affordable Future to review... to review the BPU's twenty twenty-four IRP. And most of, or that principally consisted of looking at Black and Beach's full IRP that was submitted to the board, uh, just a couple of months ago. And I want to clarify, this is not an exhaustive review, but this is just a, a place where we focus on really high impact opportunities to perform best practice resource planning. And you can go ahead to the next slide. So we focus on three best practices or three key topics which I'll talk about here. One is sort of overall best practices, which relies on some of the work that colleagues of myself and I've done over the last several years on IRP processes. Then we'll talk about demand-side resources, and third, we'll talk about BPU's existing fleet. I'll just stop at the top here to say, uh, resource planning is a really, um, there's a serious opportunity to get things right here and do right by BPU ratepayers. The energy transition and the sort of global electricity, uh, system has been going through more changes now than ever before, and I think it's changing more quickly than it ever has before. And adapting to that new reality and making sure that we're on top of best planning practices and things like that is the best way to manage risks and the best way to manage costs for ratepayers. So this is a really important time to kind of lean in and make sure we get this right. So I'll be covering these three major topics here, and I'll give some specific recommendations to you, to you all at the end for planning in this cycle and future cycles, uh, but we're also happy to, uh, continue to work with you all if there's follow-ups that are needed. Um, and to the extent that there are questions that you want to ask while I'm talking, feel free to interrupt me and I'll go ahead and go into this.
Uh, Mr. Fitch?
Yes.
This is Rose Mulvaney Henry, and just really quick, um, the overall best, uh, practices. So is there like, uh, in this, in, I guess, in what you all do for IRPs, is there a standardized look at that? For the overall best practices, or is this sort of subjective based on, um, consultants like RMI and, and others in your field?
Yeah, that's a great question. Uh, it is, it is a continuously evolving practice, and so best practices, uh, continue to emerge. And there have been efforts to kind of standardize what best practices look like, uh, over time. What I'll be pulling from is an RMI report that came out in twenty twenty-three called Reimagining Resource Planning that does pull on, uh, many case studies from across the country of sort of resource planning best practices that include munis, investor-owned utilities, and, and many different regions of the country. Um, so that's sort of one called a compilation of best practices. But, uh, and there's also a previous one that was written by, uh, Synapse Energy Economics that I believe was released in the early twenty-teens. And, um, I also know that Lawrence Berkeley National Lab is working on kind of another best practices review. So suffice it to say, there's no official standard or anything like that, but, um, organizations like RMI are working to kind of compile what works best and present it so it's helpful for, uh, for folks like you all who are kind of overseeing these processes.
Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and advance through. I've got a lot of content here, and just for the sake of time, knowing I have fifteen minutes, I might ask you to advance more quickly through some of these, but, um, I'll, I'll go ahead and just, uh, Rob, to the extent that that makes sense, I'll, I'll, you know. So again, we're going to start with integrated resource, overall best practices, and you can go to the next slide. And we generally categorize these into three qualities. Uh, there's lots of different ways to kind of slice this up, but we, we have enjoyed this, uh, this kind of framework. So a good IRP should be trusted, which means it's transparent and well-vetted with stakeholder input throughout. It should be comprehensive, which means it accurately represents costs, capabilities, uh, system impacts and values of resources, and considers all the potential actions that, that, uh, systems can take, and then aligned. So we should be clear-eyed about what our priorities are and how that should show up in the plan. So I'll focus on these three kind of objectives. You can think of them as sort of as north stars as we go through. And I'm going to really condense here, but, uh, as Kerry mentioned, we will submit kind of a larger report that goes into these in greater detail. So you can go to the next slide. So I'm presenting here less of a review and more of just our recommendations on how, uh, the BPU IRP could get even better at, uh, at meeting these qualities, and I'll present three for trusted. The first one is, uh, there are steps that can be taken towards making the IRP more transparent in terms of model and input data and documentation. These are pretty complicated models that take in a lot of data, and it can be, uh, somewhat cumbersome to make those publicly accessible. But also in order for stakeholders to trust, uh, what's going on, or to trust the results, it's really helpful to be able to validate. And for us to be able to have conversations where there's sort of an even playing field or everybody's looking at the same thing. So that's really important. Second, uh, in partnership with local stakeholders, I think kind of like a long-running stakeholder advisory working group can make sure that emerging issues are taken care of in ways that are, uh, less reactive and more proactive. And then third, and I might focus on this, uh, more later. We use the software, in this case, Black and Beach used the software called Plexos because it can do what's called economic optimization in a way that no, no human could do in terms of computation. It takes in a lot of really complex data and produces the most economic portfolio possible. And we want to really clearly indicate when we've used that and when we haven't so that, uh, as we're reviewing the IRPs, we can see this is what our software says is the most cost-effective portfolio. And that wasn't as clear as it could be, I think, in the document, and it may be helpful to go back and, and revise or, or, uh, or clarify. So I think I'll leave it there on trusted. Uh, Rob, I'll ask you to advance the slides. And I think I'll just go, uh, right through this one because it's, it's just about the optimization. So next slide again. Second, uh, comprehensive. So comprehensive means the IRP should evaluate a whole wide array of potential solutions to our, our needs. Uh, and there's kind of three recommendations I light on here. The first is, I think it's possible to include even more available resources, like hybrid resources. So that's co-locating solar and storage, uh, at the same, or, or wind and storage at the same site. Or clean repowering, which is a practice that involves basically connecting even more clean resources at an existing point of interconnection. So you could imagine, for example, interconnecting more energy storage at the Nierman Creek plant and using that point of interconnection to do that. The second, uh, recommendation here is developing an all-source request for proposals, uh, or an RFP, which essentially asks the marketplace what's available right now that we could procure to meet our energy needs, uh, either now or in the relatively short term. And that can give you a sense of, uh, what is actually possible out there and ground your resource planning in, in evidence. And it can also work really well to implement what you do in your resource planning. So there's kind of an iterative element there. And then the third is, uh, we're getting better and better at integrating the distribution system. So the poles and wires that go to our houses and things like that into the IRP. And there's great guidance, especially from the, again, the Lawrence Berkeley National Lab on this. So I really recommend that, uh, potentially Black and Beach or you all or BPU staff generally look into that and, and consult with them because they do provide technical assistance on that. Uh, I have a quick next slide on good practices on, uh, RFPs. And the concept is quite simple. An RFP is simply, an all-source RFP is simply, hey, we have this need for capacity energy in the future. And we're asking any and all technologies to be able to bid in. If you have a technology you'd like to bid in at a certain price, please do, so we can have that information and use it. And when we do that, we get a sense that's policy neutral about what resources are possible out there and what we can benefit from. So again, something I really recommend. Uh, and I'll go ahead and, and advance through the next slide. And then finally aligned, this is relatively simple, but, um, we want to make sure, and you can advance to the next slide here. We want to make sure that the IRP integrates objectives and policies across the kind of jurisdictions that's relevant for it. So at the federal level, that's Inflation Reduction Act and other policies. At the state and regional level, that's state policies, SPPs, policies, and regional priorities. And then at the city level, if the city has targets and objectives that might include air quality or economic development, we should make sure that BPU includes those. We want to make sure BP is aligned across all of those. All right, next slide. You can go on more as well. All right, second is demand-side resources. I'm going to go pretty quickly on these because I'm realizing I'm running out of time. So demand-side resources are functionally things that are attached at the distribution level or, uh, at people's, for example, houses and businesses. So that might be rooftop solar or behind-the-meter storage. And those can provide a lot of different values to the system. So it can provide energy and capacity values, as well as avoiding the cost and investments that you might need to do at a transformer and resilience value, and that could include resilience for the grid during reliability events. Next slide. So generally, we're going to provide recommendations across three elements here. One is forecasting DERs or distributed energy resources. The second is expanding utility, energy efficiency, and, and demand-side management or EDSM programs. And the third is enabling and preparing for what we're calling virtual power plants. And Rob, I'll have you advance here through, and I'll have you advance again. This is about, uh, Inflation Reduction Act provisions and their impacts on forecasting. And I just want to, uh, highlight a couple of examples of energy efficiency and demand-side management programs. For Collins Utilities, uh, in Colorado has this Epic Homes program that they're targeting ten thousand households with that would, that finances accessible clean energy projects, including solar and energy efficiency, and is levering, leveraging a lot of third-party capital, including from kind of like state and other public agencies. Now on the right, you see Arizona Public Service, who has this Cool Rewards Smart Thermostat program, which provides two hundred and seventy-eight megawatts of capacity to APS. So using these types of programs, like a smart thermostat program, for instance, even if, uh, something like five percent of, uh, BPU's customer base signed up for that, that would be about five megawatts, which could seriously reduce risk from capacity purchases like we've talked about. So it's something we should look into. All right, and I'll have you advance again here. And then, uh, there's some information here about virtual power plants, which I think are a future thing for BPU, but I'll just, it should continue to, I think, be on, on y'all's radar in terms of what these can potentially provide, and happy to talk more about that in the future. Rob, I'll have you advance through here again.
You have one minute.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll have you advance through one more time. All right, the last thing is evaluating BPU's, uh, fleet here, and mostly we're focusing on Nierman Creek's power plants, uh, Unit One, which is a big part of energy and costs of BP's existing portfolio. Now I'll have you advance through here. So I think there's lots of options for what we could do with this. Economic retirement and replacement's definitely on the table. Uh, the, this is a relatively expensive plant, and there's cheap alternatives that could provide the same energy and capacity at a cheaper rate. We didn't evaluate that here, but an integrated resources plan is the appropriate place to do that because we can do a rigorous analysis using this sophisticated technology. And you could consider using either clean repowering or seasonal operation as well to reduce costs. So if, if there's one recommendation that, uh, I make that sticks with you, it's, uh, this, the twenty twenty-four IRP represents a really critical opportunity to evaluate economic retirement at the Nierman Creek plant. And this is something you can do with that analysis to just changing a couple of different settings in Plexos. And something I really recommend is just evaluating what's most economic in terms of when to retire that, that unit because it may not be when it's fully depreciated. And, uh, I'll ask you to advance a couple more, or one more, Rob. Oh, okay. Sorry, am I, or are you, can you still hear me, Rob? Ah, okay. All right, I'll, I'll wait here until we're reconnected. Ah, okay. Understood. Well, if folks can hear me in the room, thanks very much for hearing the presentation. I think I may be disconnected soon, but, uh, very much appreciated.
What happened?
Rob, we couldn't hear you.
Yeah, I saw you.
He's still talking.
Rob, do you need us to let Tyler know to pause?
Can you do it through chat?
And text him.
Go ahead, Kerry.
Kerry, can you finish for him?
That wouldn't be good for anybody.
I think we're about almost out of time anyway.
I'm sorry?
I said, I think we were, he was almost out of time anyway, so, you know, maybe another opportunity, he can come and finish it at another time, but.
Uh, this is the time we've set up, so do you have anything you want to add?
No, nothing else to add. We can, we thank you guys for the opportunity to do this. Uh, this is something that our organizations kind of came to and put together, and again, wanted to provide this to you guys. I think a commissioner asked me earlier, you know, what would be the cost of this project? And, you know, I wanted you guys to make sure we understood, like, this was something that we wanted to do to give to you all for the BP to have. So this was at no cost to the BP for us to kind of.
And the board does have a copy of all of, of the entire, in fact, both of them.
Well, thank you guys again so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Gooch.
Is there anybody else, uh, wishing to comment?
Well, I think that's a shame. I hope there's another chance to, I think we only had just gotten to the core of the thing there. But, um, hopefully another chance will present itself. So for my comment on the, uh, IRP, Ty Gorman, Wyandotte resident, um, just wanted to address a couple of the things that, um, that could have been included in the, uh, in the IRP, uh, that I mentioned briefly earlier. One is the opportunity for BP to act as a pass-through agent on community solar. This, uh, is not limited to the one grant program that KHRC did not receive that, um, that Mr. Johnson mentioned earlier. Kansas is still listed as a sub-grantee opportunity for two of the national, uh, nonprofit organizations that did win that EPA grant for community solar. And municipal organizations are really the key and the easiest to apply for. One of the nonprofits is from Connecticut, the other's from Ohio, but they both have to serve Kansas in a competitive application process that BPU would need to be, um, kind of transferring that work that originally went to KHRC through Andrew Ferris, who I see is moving on. Um, so there needs to be attention in the near term on retooling that, um, that really good program that Andrew Ferris worked on with KHRC to, uh, get sub-grants from these other, uh, national organizations. And those can, uh, be just a starting point for the ability for BPU to access tax credits, uh, as grants because non-pro, that's part of the big thing the Inflation Reduction Act did was allow BPU and nonprofits and cities to access tax grants as if, at tax credits as if they were grants and pass on fifty to seventy percent of savings for solar. Uh, and those, uh, savings would go to subscribers in the community solar program, therefore, hopefully, directly to struggling or low-income customers. The opportunity is there. I mean, there's also low fi, low, low to no-cost financing that, uh, is involved in those solar programs. And I have videos that have been produced by, uh, a number of organizations, including RMI, uh, to really describe in detail how BPU could, uh, really reduce the bills significantly for a lot of low-income customers through a program like that. Um, and those programs, none of those types of programs that he bucketed in under DER, uh, you know, distributed energy resources were included, or usually are included in the, in IRPs. Uh, that are, that are kind of standard like the, like the Black and Beach one. Because like you said, things have been changing in the industry a lot faster than the IRP practices have been changing. So, um, uh, there's that, and then there's the energy efficiency. You know, the fifty million dollars from the HERO program and the fifty million dollars, uh, for the homes program that are being transferred from at statewide level, uh, they're not going to be easily just transferred to citizens. It's not a situation where, uh, you know, energy efficiency's value begins and ends with a customer filling out an online application that they heard about from. customer filling out an online application that they heard about from the website of BPU, and that's where the value proposition ends. The energy efficiency in the residential market, especially where housing has been disinvested, like it has in KCK, more than almost anywhere else in the state, is the highest peaking, cost-effective resource. That's where all of the cost comes in for utilities, is meeting that top 30, 50 hours of the year where power is peaking. So if you are predicting, bringing into programmatically, creating a demand flexibility and a payment program that rewards customers who reduce their peak demand through, through energy efficiency, but also through demand flexibility and the types of thermostat control, water heater control, appliance control programs that, that also were not in any way followed or modeled in the Integrated Resource Plan for their, for the capacity for them to be implemented here in KCK. That also immediately reduces low-income customer bills more than others through these types of aggregation programs, accesses federal resources, has stacking tax credits and loan to low-to-no-cost loan resources available for nonprofits like BPU. Evergy can't access these, or won't access these funds, even if they could, because it doesn't go to their profit or their shareholders, you know, directly as a pass-through to customers. There's no incentive for them to do that. There is an incentive for y'all to do that. UG doesn't have the expertise or the staff in a, you know, no, in a revenue-neutral situation to take advantage of those resources or pass on these cost savings. But the value's not being captured or modeled in the current IRP. And, you know, I think there's a whole lot of value to looking at that as a way to address 60 hours of the year that cost 60% of the funding for, for market energy and peak hours. Like, the value savings to that is incredibly important to utilities in the near future. The Southwest Power Pool is still negotiating, hemming and hawing about how exactly it's going to value those resources in response to the FERC rules that passed over the past couple of years, requiring them to do so. So that's something that BPU can and should also be involved in, is the implementation and negotiation of how to implement those federal rules in order to maximize value for our customers and our community. That would, I mean, if it's implemented correctly, it saves BPU a huge amount of money to focus on these demand resources. The cheapest form of electricity is electricity that is not used at those peak times. And that's incredible cost savings, there's incredible growth, like opportunities there over the next few years within the timeframe that you're looking at solar, but also other capacity stacks that might have to lead to a gas plant if better resources that are a fraction of that cost aren't considered between now and then. So I think that hopefully fills, to some extent, the, a little bit of the analysis that I wish we had been able to hear tonight. I hope you'll consider allowing the public to hear the completion of the study or more context around those types of resources at the next board meeting, where you'll be addressing the IRP in whatever form that takes, since it didn't work tonight. And I'll leave it there for now, thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public wanting to speak about this topic? Andrew, I'll.
I just, I just, Mr. Manager and members, I just wanted to commend Mr. Gorman for one of the most elocution of quite a soliloquy to augment what we had heard. As an orator myself, from time to time, that was quite, quite a gap filler and done spontaneously as it was. I just wanted to thank you for helping to augment that, which we didn't hear, and I just thought it was remarkable to have you bring that at this point, Mr. Gorman. It's his birthday too, well, well done, happy birthday. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
I also wanted to echo my appreciation to Carrie and to Ty for coming and providing the presentation, as well as to Tyler. And I was going to ask Andrew to speak, if you would, to the possibility of us being a sub-grantee for the Solar for All.
So, yeah, as he mentioned, there are two agencies that are still working through the Solar for All Grant Program. So I have heard word on the one from Ohio, and so through that, they do have a grant that will capture the metropolitan area of Kansas City, and so Kansas City, Kansas will receive funding for that. With that said, is the funding as part of that, that grant itself is not for community solar directly. Again, it still means likely 300 to 400 low-income residential homes will receive solar, so anybody interested in that will continue to, that conversation. So that, those funds are coming to Kansas City, Kansas, and so that is great funds, whether it comes through us or not, but we will see that coming forward at some point. They're still working through that, those processes take a long time. The, the solution in, in the Northeast, we haven't received word on exactly what or how we may be able to participate with that one at this point. So that one's still a work in progress, they're both still a work in progress, but we did receive confirmation that the one out of Ohio will have funds coming to Wyandotte County, so that, that is good news, so.
But those are individual solar.
They are, they are rooftop solar at the homes themselves. That will not be funds coming through us, but we will participate in that space, one, probably helping to find individuals that, that work for that, and then two, our, our engineers have to work with those to, to bring that solar online, right? They have to connect to the grid, all those type of things, so it will be a lot more work for, for our engineers to do that. But that is quite a few homes to, to bring here in Wyandotte County, so that is good
So, so any other thing we received in terms of other public comments through the, through the emails or any, any other methods?
Yeah, so, so early on, we received a, a few comments from the Sierra Club and Mr. Gorman, we got a couple of comments from them, and some other limited conversations. And then here, really Friday afternoon, and for the next several days, we've received a handful of comments on those as well. All of those will be included directly in the book itself. Most of the comments are very similar. Again, a lot of them deal with cost and the pilot a little bit, and some of those type of things. But again, those will all be shared directly in the report, that everybody can read exactly what was put down on, on all of those, so. But we did receive several here in the last few days.
Okay, and then we'll be making all that available to the board.
All of that will be available, so as soon as, we'll, we'll rerun the report effectively and attach all of these, and then we'll save it out to the website, so everybody can see it as soon as this week, so.
And the RMI will be attached to the report.
The, the documentation that they have provided and the presentation will be provided as well, yep, all of it.
And we'll also put it on our website, so it's there for the public, as part of this public meeting, this board meeting, it'll be part of the, part of the presentation left behind there for the public, so anybody that goes to our website can certainly see it.
No, and one, one comment I would make is, the Sierra Club, RMI, with their suggestions, are, are valid suggestions. I don't, I don't want to act like they're not valid suggestions, they are. And, and we, we continue to explore demand response, those initiatives, some of those, again, are growing in their maturity at the SPP level, and so some of that does take time for that maturity to grow, and we are considered a small utility, 2.6 million megawatt-hours. 4 million is considered the larger utility that has to adopt some of these policies, so some of it is just a matter of, of allowing those things to mature. And on top of that, as Mr. Gorman mentioned, there are solar initiatives that potentially we could look to achieve that are outside of the Solar for All Program, that does allow, you know, up to, I'll say for us, 60% funding for the IRA. That does still create a cost, and collectively, if we decide to do any of those things, we have to decide how we want to pay for that. So those are all real things, it's just collectively, things have costs, and you've got to determine the value of those, those challenges, but, so one of the things that you have mentioned in the past is potentially speeding up the, the process of the IRP and doing it more frequently than every five years that we currently do it today. So if we're going to do it every two or every three years, or whatever your recommendation may be, is all of these can be encompassed into that new plan, and we can look at those in a different manner than maybe we did this time. Again, next time, it's going to be a little bit different, because the world's going to change again, and RMI is going to have a different sheet of different things, but we can continue to evolve as these things evolve, and, and the world is changing, so we want to evolve with it, so doing our best.
So the other thing I want to point out is, also including the RMI, are certain things that we've already done, like the thermostat program, that's what, 10 years ago, and I know, I know technology has advanced, and the, and the BPU is going to revisit that with newer technology, that may be a possibility, but I just want, I'm just picking up on things that's already, we've already done, we've already have gotten past, and, and other things that are out there, and Andrew also mentioned, that are, we can remind the board that they did say two or three years, you know, may be a good timeframe for picking it up, as opposed to waiting five or six years, you know, because that is a long stretch of time, so.
Yeah, so, so the five-year window is our requirement, it's, if we want to do it shorter, that's up to you, so.
Mr. Johnson? So Andrew, thank you for your comments, I appreciate that. You know, just a, a couple of things I, I want to make sure that I understand, right? So the IRP that is in question right now, that you all have put together and put so much time and effort into, and that RMI has taken the time, you know, thank you to Carrie and, and your group, and to RMI for, for doing that, appreciate it, at no cost to BPU and its ratepayers, I'd like to add, so thank you for, for that. Always good to have a different set of eyes, right, coming from a, a different angle perhaps. But what, what this board does with that IRP, because I've not been involved in one since I've been on the board, is we simply confirm to WAPA in this case, that yes, BPU has an IRP. Is, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and so, and so, and it's not, you know, you know, it's not an immutable document, it's not an immutable plan, in fact, it, it can and should, as you just said, evolve as, as, as we evolve into next year, the following year, et cetera, right? I mean, I, I, I have to believe that you don't, you know, in your position and, and the folks who spend so much time with this, that you guys just pick this up once every five years, in this case, and never look at it again until the, until that next five years? I can't believe that that's the case.
That, that's correct, and so this is, this plan will be wrong, it is wrong, and so it's really just to give you an idea of what the world may look like if this happens, or that happens, or this happens.
Right.
And so what avenues may you take, so you think through the process of how may I get to, from point A to point B to point C? And so two years from now, it's going to look a little bit different, because either one of the things we've seen is solar prices haven't come down, we, we haven't seen that drop, we've actually seen it come up. Well, maybe that's a new trend, and the trend is moving upward, maybe that's a short-term trend. But all of those things change over time, and it's really just to, to allow us to think through that process, and what may work best, and whether that be demand response matures enough, and it does become the cheapest option, maybe it is solar, maybe it is something else, but, and our load's going to grow different than we believe it to grow, right? So one of the things RMI pointed out is, hey, does electrification occur at a different rate than you believe it to occur? Does energy efficiency occur at a different rate? Do you see more solar panels on homes? All of those things will impact what our load is, and again, our load projection is just our load projection, and so therefore it may be slower, it may be quicker, those are things that we, we look to achieve. And so, yes, it's just a document that we look at, and we continue to evolve every time we do it, and we continue. So anything we will do from an action perspective will be based on what actually happens, right? So if, if some of these EPA regs come through, that will spur us to take a certain action. If we have large load growth, that will spur us to take a different action. So before we take action on anything, so this isn't action-taking, the action is when we come back to you and say, hey, this is what is really occurring, here are the alternatives and options, what do we want to do? What makes the most sense from a cost, reliability, all of those things, and we'll have to determine those at that point.
Right, and, and I think one thing, and we've talked about this, RMI has said it much more eloquently than I ever could, you know, when we talk about stakeholder engagement and putting together, you know, perhaps an advisory group or a work group, right, that, that BPU would work in conjunction with, in the off-times of, you know, over the next two to three years, whatever that timeframe the board decides it's going to be, so, so those discussions can be sort of ongoing, right? I mean, we, we've hit on that a little bit before, and so I guess I would just encourage the board to, you know, to, to adopt something like that, because, I mean, I, I guess it just, it makes practical sense, you know, to, to do that.
If I piggyback off of that too, because all of that conversation, I think, is, is relevant, but especially on that last point, just for public knowledge, the reason that we do this is to be prepared, like Andrew was saying, for all of the scenarios, but the end goal of that is to be as cost-effective as we can possibly be as a public utility, so that we are not three years late responding to a market change, and you all have to carry the burden of the cost of us, you know, not moving to something that could be cheaper the minute it becomes cheaper. And to the, the last bit on the public engagement, I mean, that, that is why, if you're sitting in the audience, or you're listening at home, or hear about this down the road, thinking, well, you know, what is the value of public engagement in that, or, you know, if there's a meeting, why might you attend? That's why, the, the goal of all of this is for us to give you the best-run, most-responsive in-the-moment utility, especially when it comes to adapting to new energy sources or just changing prices on all of those, and that's why Andrew and Black and Beach and Rocky Mountain Institute, and all of the information we can get on this is, is so valuable, because we don't want to check in on it years down the road and go, gosh, we weren't prepared for whatever scenario that popped up, right? That there's a change in the marketplace, and if we had been ready to respond to that, we could have provided, you know, our energy production at a better rate if we were ready. So this is, all of it is to be ready for all those scenarios, Andrew, like you said, cost of one thing goes up or down, or, you know, regulatory market changes, so just, again, piggybacking off of, off of Rose's comments there, would encourage public members to be involved with that, because it's really, it is, the aim is for your benefit, we want to give you the best value out of that possible, and that's what all that work is for. That wasn't really a question, Andrew, but I chime in there.
Well, and I would certainly echo what, what the, what you have said too, and Rose as well, so, you know, we're not, we're not offering a plan that the board needs to take action on anytime soon, it's just, here's, here is a set of, and I can't remember 11 or so different scenarios.
I think there are nine scenarios.
Nine different scenarios, and.
Ten.
And here is, here is possibilities, but as Andrew's already stated, you know, next year may be different, two years may be different, you know. We have, and still have, a, like a 20-year master plan, we have long-term water plans, we have, we've done other plans around generation, but that don't necessarily mean that those plans are set in stone that dictates that BPU is going to have to move in any one direction on any timeline, it's just, here's the things that we, that we think we need to do at the time, just like we're looking at now, trying to take an educated guess about where things may go, but before anything happens, you know, staff is going to come back and tell the board, tell the public, here's things that are, that are affecting our ability to continue to operate the way we are, or here's some of the things that are out there that we might want to visit, and some, some changes in what we said before, that we want to take on now. And that'll be a board decision, and the community will certainly be involved with those discussions, and, you know, our board meetings are open, and, and everything we're trying to do is, is out there for the public to, to see, and, so I want to take a break. Rob, do, do we recover?
Okay.
Okay. So to the board, I, I do want to just state this. So, to the board, I do want to just state this. We did lose our Zoom connection, so that's why we lost Mr.
Fitch.
Fitch. But we do still have cameras going, so it's being recorded.
This is the audio, so you're recording the camera.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, we just lost the audio part, so. But we are, we are still recording and then, I mean, we can still conduct meetings and this will still be out there for the public, so did want to state that. But we would like to continue moving forward and we will continue our conversation. We will welcome, you know, any type of conversations with the Sierra Club, RMI, or others that may want to join us in this future journey of where we go, you know, when those times come. But we would like to bring this back to the board, the next board meeting, like we talked about, to stick with the timeline that we, that we've already previously discussed. So, anything else you want to add?
No, all I would say is that this discussion can go on after the acknowledgement of the IRP. So, it is, it can be as active as the board wants it to be active. And so, it's really up to you on where we go from here. So, I think staff is open to whatever you guys decide and so, that's all I'd say.
Thank you for all your work on this, Andrew, and to Black and Beach, our folks here as well. Appreciate all the work and feedback and back and forth and answering all of our questions.
And thank you for all your questions and for, you know, help, asking us to go through and bring things back again and again, so thank you for that too. So, Mr. President, if that's okay, I'll go ahead and close out the public comment section for the IRP and we'll move through the next set of topics.
Okay.
Okay. Next is Dennis still here? So, Dennis, if we can be quick, if we can be quick with the presentation. And this is a survey we've done with our employees.
Yes, I'll do my best.
Okay.
I will keep it moving forward. So, this is an employee survey that we completed recently and these are the highlights of the survey. I will say next steps are that we will, in two weeks, we have another meeting to follow up with the takeaways from this. So, we wanted to just provide you today just with the initial data that we were able to gather and then we'll put a plan of action together that we will come back to the board with. So, today's agenda, employee survey overview. We're going to break down the demographics of the survey, so how many people responded, how many employees responded to it, and then give you some of the questions and those responses. The goals of the survey, one was to understand how our employees understand their benefits and what their satisfaction levels are with certain benefits, to assess or begin to assess employee engagement. So, that's something we haven't ever done before at the BPU and now it's time that we start assessing that. And then our people's communications preferences. So, with regard to the responses, we had, again, you know, just like the last time, fantastic response. CBIZ says typically you have a 30% response rate. Ours is 67%, so a high number of employees did respond to the survey, a confidential survey, so 337 responses. Strong participation across all groups. You'll see that here in a little bit. And when you have that strong participation, you're going to get good data. And then the engagement level of our employees is really high by the response rate, so that's what that shows. So, who responded to the survey? This is a little bit better breakdown. Essentially, 42% of the response rate were our water and electric operations, which is our largest employee group, so that's what you would think the response rate would be. So, that's really good. It shows that our field people responded as well as our internal staff that work in the corporate offices. So, we had essentially, what was it, 83% of the responses were our physical and clerical unions and then 17% were non-union responses. And it's not that far off from our labor breakdown versus our non-union breakdown, so that's good news. Highest response rate was from our eight to 14-year employees, so people that have been around for that tenure. Then you can see the breakdown from there, 15 to 20 years, 21, and so on and so forth. As far as supervisory responsibilities, you can see that 81 of the, these 289 that decided to respond to the survey or give us this information actually out of the survey, 337 responses. You weren't required to respond to every question. 289 of those 337 told us at what level they were within the organization. To me, this is really one of the key findings and it's a good finding that our people believe that BPU is focusing on the needs of its customers, improving quality of life in our community while promoting safe and reliable, sustainable utilities. So, what that essentially is our tagline as an organization. 82% of our people believe that that's the direction that we're heading, that they serve that purpose. Again, the values alignment, mission alignment, 76% of our employees believe that we live out our mission as an organization. Many employees take pride in BPU's positive impact in the community. Employees report strong emphasis on meeting our customer needs. Our people out in the field as well as internally, we want to serve our customers. And then, we also believe our sustainability efforts are worth it and that we're achieving those goals as an organization. One of the new things with regard to this survey is a net promoter score. So, this is the first year we've asked this. It's a sign of employee engagement, a very high-level general sign. You know, what that number ultimately says is we do have employees that are engaged, however, there is room for improvement. So, you can see that the scores of 74 promoters and passives is pretty strong. However, we do have 26% of our employees that are detractors, that believe that there are things that we're not doing to the level that we should, we should be. And so, this is just another breakdown, a different look at those numbers. So, on a scale of zero to 10, how likely are you to recommend BPU is a great workplace? You can see that net promoter score is very high when it comes to our newer employees. But our eight to 14 and 15 to 20-year employees don't rank us extremely high. But then again, in our 21-plus-year employees, people that have been here long-term, do rank us high. So, we've got some work to do with our eight to 20-year employees. And I think where you see some of that, it'll show up here in a little bit in the numbers, is with regard to two major factors. One, I think, you know, people get used to being in an organization and don't see the light at the end of the tunnel with regard to their career. So, they get stuck in that mode eight to 20 years, but then when they hit that 21-year mark, they can see the light at the end of the tunnel or are looking back and saying, hey, this is a pretty good place to work. So, again, net promoter score by tenure, this is just another look of that exact same deal. Our eight to 14 and 15 to 20-year employees, we've got to do some work on from a satisfaction level. When you look at the type of people, you know, that believe we're heading in the right direction, our physical union is, has an overall net detractor. So, those are the folks that aren't real happy. You know, we will delve more into that information to find out why. Part of it could have been we had that long struggle with the contract negotiations on the physical side, whereas our clerical, union clerical, we resolved that contract relatively quickly, if you remember. That CBA was done quickly. And then our non-bargaining unit people have really high net promoter score. So, just the observations and recommendations. Again, we had a great participation rate. You can see that. And with regard to our net promoter score, this is going to give us a great baseline for the future when we do these surveys again to see if we can improve on that number. It's a good number, but it's not great, so that's something we want to improve on. So, what are the strengths of working for the BPU organization? What do our people feel are our strengths? One of them is they do value our benefits. That's the number one. They value the pay that they receive, the pension and job security. But as we've talked about here before, with regard to our culture, it's something we've got to work on. Many organizations went through this during the COVID crisis, when you couldn't get together and do things. You couldn't meet. You couldn't have activities. And we realize that as an organization and this year, we started our culture club. And we just started with Abby and her team, Women at BPU, a new group of which we're going to have, we've just found out, great participation. They're going to have their first meeting coming up here in the next, what, two weeks? November 7th. And so, we're working on the culture. We knew it was going to be an issue that we need to work on and we've already started that, but those, these numbers show that that's an area we need improvement on. So, top strengths, again, just a little summary. Benefits package, job security is important to our people, and then people value our community impact. Why they work? Why do they, you know, why do we provide clean water? Why do we do, go out night and fix broken power lines and in storms and all that? They value doing that for our organization, for our community. So, what are the areas that need the most improvement? Again, just a reverse look of what we just talked about. BPU culture is something we've got to work on. Our training opportunities. What we see at BPU, you know, we're a 500-employee organization and what you'll see is opportunities for growth in a smaller organization like this aren't that great. And so, many times people see that, you know, if you're behind a relatively young person that is your supervisor, you know, what are my other opportunities? So, some people feel like they're stagnant and we have launched this year numerous new training opportunities. One of them, a supervisory training opportunity to help our people deal with employee relations issues in a much better manner. So, that I, we hope that those supervisors will then be able to reflect on the employees, the importance of motivation and holding people accountable on things of that nature. So, the employee experience. 90% say they have the space and equipment that they need to do their job well, which is a really strong number. Then with regard to, you know, the different departments that have that, that feel like they have the space and equipment, you'll see HR, admin services. We lumped those two departments together just because of numbers. You know, IT, many of our departments feel that way, that they have the equipment and workspace to do my job well. And then people in my immediate work area work well as a team. So, you'll see again, general management, HR, admin services, IT, customer service, all have really good, strong scores. We'll take this data and break it down further here in the, when we come back together in two weeks to help make determinations on those areas that don't feel like they have the safety equipment to do their job well, we want to find out why. So, we'll have focus groups, then we'll break down that information more. And same area, my immediate supervisor gives people recognition. Again, you can see the departments that value that, that feel that they're heading in the right direction. And again, we'll break down this data further. So, areas for improvement, what can BPU do for their employees to create a better environment? One is work-life balance. So, so important, in particular for younger people, when they come into the workforce to have that flexibility. And being in a utility, sometimes we can't provide that. It's, you know, when you work at the power plant, there are shifts and you have to work in those shifts. And when we have storms, people have to work overtime, but those are areas that we're going to look at and try to get better at. Internal communication. Employees want more transparent communication from management. We really work on this at BPU and I think you guys see a lot of the emails in particular that come out from the Human Resources Department. Every month, you know, we have a text every month. We have a separate email to come out and introduce people to our benefit plans and address certain issues, EAP and all that kind of stuff. We're going to work on that further with the rest of the organization as well. And we know our new director of communications is going to do a fantastic job for us. Career development is another area. Something we're focusing on is offering these new training opportunities and to get people better opportunity to move up in the organization. We're also, you know, as you know, we started succession planning three years ago for our executive positions, identifying people that could potentially be, to be able to fill those positions and we've rolled that down to the director level as well. And then lastly, our pension plan. So, people have concerns about tier one and the tier-two pension plans. That is not something we can address as an organization. We have a separate board, a pension board that governs the pension plan and they are working, you know, I sit in on their meetings and they're working extremely hard to, once we get the funding level to the point we need to, to be able to get those two plans a little bit closer with regard to their benefits. So, with regard to communication, you know, our people right now don't feel all that great about getting general information about what's happening at BPU. You know, we make a lot of efforts to do that, but some people we're not reaching and that's something we've got to work on as an organization. How do people want to be communicated to? How do we provide it? How do they prefer? Well, you can see, you know, you've got about everything under the sun that people prefer. So, emails, our intranet, which BPU Central, if you guys have been out there lately, you'll see what a fantastic job IT's done for our Intranet site, all the information that's available there. We do regular texting to our people, staff meetings, Watson Water, you know, so we try, believe me. Select all the benefits BPU can provide additional educational materials on. Again, pension plan. Why the pension plan? It's very complex. Anybody's pension plan, any organization's is. So, we try to do that. We had retirement planning seminars this year for everybody that was five years or closer to retirement. So, we did a big education push for those people. And then January of this year, of next year, we've got on the schedule all other employees to do retirement planning. PPO, our medical plan. Again, you know, one of the complex benefits, you guys see how much communication we do, but people still want to be educated. Our EAP, you can see the list of the things that we can work on so that they can better understand our benefit offerings. So, which of the following benefits do you value the most? This is really an important number because our, they, people, the lower the number, the better, okay, in this data. So, medical plan, 1.7, the people value it the most. Well, that's important because we spend a lot of money on our medical plan. We've cut costs tremendously but been able to keep benefits relatively the same. We've taken some hits, but people value what we have. Our pension plan, people value it. PTO, those, you can see that. And then the information I received about my benefit plan is easy to understand. 98% of people say that it's. So, that's, that is good. I'll skip through this really quickly. These are some of the training opportunities that we're going to delve into more and provide more information down the road. It'll focus on, we'll get focus groups on these issues and deal with those in a more detailed manner. That's a long-term program. And then lastly, the last question was, you know, am I satisfied of my opportunities for professional growth? And we still have 27% of the organization that don't think that they have And we still have 27% of the organization that don't, don't think that they have those opportunities. They don't value those opportunities. And again, a big part of that is as an organization, when you're 500 people, there just aren't that many opportunities to move upward because you don't have that many managers, as it should be. You know, you want less chiefs and more, you know, Indians, right? You want more workers, less supervisors. And so people see that. And at this point, you know, I've tried to get through it as quickly as I could. Do you guys have any questions on the initial data? Again, we'll come back with more detailed information and plans to address our, our areas that we need improvement on.
Dennis, on professional growth, did, does that include being able to take a course? Or is it just on moving within the?
Yeah, it's, it's, it was geared more towards movement in the organization. We do have a really good benefit and educational assistance program.
Right.
So that people get, you know, can take a class that as long as it's related to your career, BP will help pay for that as long as you achieve a certain grade level. It's a great opportunity. A lot of people take advantage of it. So, you know, I think, but this, this is more geared for promotion.
This wasn't considered in that, yeah. Okay.
Well, and I apologize for that.
That, that is just a, you know, a general statement that has been used in, in the past. So more workers, less supervisors. Any other questions?
So Dennis, how, how diverse is our workforce?
So we, with regard to our general workforce, we in every category other than the Hispanic community, we are close to meeting the, the goals of what the levels are in Wyandotte County. So, you know, the African-American community in Wyandotte County is about 21%. We're at 19 as far as an organization. Our Hispanic community, we've got work to do. And in fact, we just made an offer. Person hadn't started yet, they accepted it. We do have a diversity position that we are bringing on in HR, and this person is of Hispanic descent. And we're going to reach out to the minority in women, in Wyandotte County, minorities and women to give them opportunity, more opportunities to work. It's a big focus.
Awesome. I, I was Mark, when the statement I made earlier in, when we were meeting with our previous session was that it looked, our leadership team looks poor. And I was speaking of diversity in our leadership team. And I think that if, if we could try to focus a little bit more on our leadership team looking more diverse rather than our entire workforce, I think that'd be very helpful to, to the organization as well.
Yes.
Just, I don't know, specific questions? I just appreciate the briefing on this. And I think probably as we get towards this part two of it, right, is we've got this information, how are we addressing it? I'll, I don't know if I'll have questions then, but I'm looking forward to that. I appreciate, just take us through this.
Thank you, Brett.
Yep. And I too appreciate very much the overview. Almost 20% though dissatisfaction rate was a little bit problematic, you know. I just wondered, was there any discussion about our residency? You know, I mean, did that ever come up during the course? Or does it, the residency of living in Wyandotte County? Or has any of that bled over into part of your discussions with, with our employee base at all?
You know, the last survey, while, while it didn't come up in the survey data, it did in the focus groups. And so, yeah, you know, it's, it's something our employees, you know, wish they had more flexibility, but it, it, you know, doesn't, I guess it doesn't hurt us with regard to retention of our current employees. So once they become an employee, we're able to keep our people. And as you guys know, we, we talked about our turnover rate. And overall, a 6% turnover is very strong. And when you look at non-retirement turnover, it's about 4%. But that's a great question. And, and we'll make sure we cover that in our focus groups as well.
Thank you again. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll ask Lori to come up to be very, very, very quick. I know we've, we've gone long tonight, so.
Good evening.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about our credit rating review that we had with S&amp;P. Every year, each of the rating agencies, S&amp;P, Fitch and Moody's, go through an annual review of us, getting updated financial information and having a conference call. A lot of times on an annual basis, they just do a review and they don't take it to committee to look at our rating in itself. But Standard and Poor's did go through that process this time. So we went through an annual credit rating with them. They had a longer list of questions, wanted some financial information. And then us as a management team had a call with them. So they did take all the information to their committee since it had been about four years since they had rated us, which was our last bond issue that we had done. From the rating review, we did receive some pretty good news in that they revised our rating from A-stable to A-positive, which is the next step up is A-plus. So we had been at A-stable for a long period of time. So that was good news, you know, that they looked at us that way. So they revised the outlook based on a couple of factors. They have a fixed charge coverage that they calculate on us. It looks at our liquidity, our ability to pay debt and any kind of lease expenses, things like that. Typically, like when you go for a loan, banks look at that, you know, to see what your lending capability is. So this is just a component of our company's overall creditworthiness. The expectation of S&amp;P after they reviewed us is that our financial metrics could remain strong while we, you know, progress through our capital plan. So some of the things they commented on, that our fixed charge coverage had increased by about 30% since 2020. Our liquidity was better since, about 21% since 2020. So they, they viewed our credit quality based on our, the utilities updating of our financial policies. So we took that back to you over the last year, which had a higher liquidity target as well as our debt coverage targets. They recognize that we have a diverse power supply through a mix of our own generation as well as some long-term purchase power. Also recognize that our water supply capacity and our treatment, we had good enough for a couple of decades. And then our low debt to capitalization ratio, which helps if there's any future debt or electric or water, on our electric or water projects. So hopefully, the positive outlook reflects our, our ability to sustain our increased coverage and liquidity levels. And a couple of things, they always recognize what a downside is and what an upside is on the rating. The downside scenario is it could be revised back to stable if the higher power, high power costs are not offset by timely cost recovery. If there's any kind of weaker than projected financial performance over time. If our competitive position weakens or if the capital costs exceed expectations, resulting in a need for higher than planned debt or draw, a drawdown of liquidity. The upside scenario is the rating could be raised if, you know, the actual financial performance aligns with our plan, with the projected fixed charge coverage and our cash and as we work through our capital plan. So we received good feedback from them and some guidelines that will help us going forward in trying to achieve our financial goals.
Lori, real quick, thank you for that. Obviously, the affirmation is nice, but can you speak to the, you know, tangible benefit, you know, for our community of having that higher, higher rating? You know, past debt, future debt, how's that benefit us?
So it, it helps us when we go to the bond market. And so the better the credit rating, you know, the lower cost anticipated, you know, and you have more participation in your bonds when you go to sell your bonds to. So that's always, it used to be that rating agencies only would rate you when you did bond issues, but now they've come around and, you know, they've changed kind of their way they look at utilities from a leverage standpoint. And so they review you on an annual basis now. So sometimes, like I said, it's just a review. Sometimes if you haven't had, like we haven't been out in the bond market since 2020, so looking at a rating, and I'm glad they did, you know, because we, if they'd just done a regular review, we wouldn't have received that kind of.
So in essence, with the higher rating or future increases to the rating?
Right.
We'll get more bang for our buck if we have to go bond anything and better deal for rate there?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's also an indicator on the liquidity that she's talked about too. So, you know, it helps us get through the day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month thing before we have to, have to go to the market. So having, having the cash on hand is important. Having the reserves is important, and they're recognizing that as well.
And one of the rating agencies, Fitch, you know, they do kind of a peer review of, of all the utilities, municipal utilities, wholesale utilities and all. And so they have, you know, in our category, they have the utilities and what their information is. And so it creates averages, it creates a goal for us to work towards and, and an idea of what we should be striving for.
Yes, Lori, I certainly hope that our unified government commissioners are understanding the, the risk that, that the, the utility would take when we look at scenarios that, that are different than what we currently have, when the risk to our credit rating, the risk to, I, I hope they're considering this because I, this is one of the things that I think they take for granted, that it's just a simple process when people talk, well, if we just combine, you know. I don't think they really, really see what potential risk we would be taking if such thing would happen. And I think that's why we did not include BPU in the consolidation process. And I think if they would look back in history and look at also these risks as well, I think they'd, they'd be better suited to make a decision.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. I'll be quick, I only got two. Thanks, Andrew, if you'd come up, please. So Andrew let me know, despite all of my efforts to change his mind, that he would be leaving us.
No! No, what? No. It's all good.
Okay. But I think we all know what, what value, how important of an employee, you know, what type of person Andrew is, what, what he means to all of us. And his loss would be sorely missed, but he did agree. I think we're still in conversation about short-term temporary contracts to try to get us through some of the things that we're still working through and.
And possibly wooing back too.
That's my, that's my hope.
My man.
You weren't one of the 20% in that bullying circuit.
I, I won't acknowledge how I, how I scored it, but no. As you know, I'm, I'm very passionate about the stuff I do. I, I love the stuff that I've got to do here for the last 11-plus years. So it's all, it's all great by me. No issues about the organization, about what I've got to do. So I'm very happy and proud of what we've accomplished and what's still getting accomplished today. So all good.
And you're not closing the door or anything?
Not closing the door. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service to the utility.
Thank you. Hate to hear that.
Yep. Well, we're not done.
Yeah, we're not done yet. There's still hope.
Last thing I got is before the next board meeting, actually on October 29th, a gentleman sitting next to me will be celebrating his birthday. He keeps asking me how old I am, but I didn't, I didn't put two and two together to think that he, he was letting me know his birthday is right around the corner.
Wow.
So David Haye, he will be celebrating his birthday.
Celebrating? Will be or did?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Will be.
October 29th.
Yeah, there's something.
So next, next topic is, is there anyone in the public wanting to comment on tonight's agenda items? And it's only what we've cut, covered tonight, so. Hearing none, Mr. President? I'll turn it back over to you.
At this time, we will proceed to board comments. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, want to thank all the members of the public who joined us this evening. We always appreciate the engagement. And those of you who were able to join us online, we normally don't have this many people from the public here. So this is, it's thinned out a little bit, but we, you guys have, 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 you bore with us tonight, so thank you very much. Appreciate that. Also want to, you know, just again, thank Carrie and your team, RMI. You know, Ty, I know you were instrumental in, in getting that done and accomplished at no cost to BPU. So thank you to the Sierra Club for, for partnering on that and, and appreciate the efforts there. We are, we're getting ready to, at the next board meeting, I believe it is, we have spent nearly a year, it actually may be over a year at this point, revising the BPU customer service policies. And anybody who was able to listen to the work session today knows that we finally completed that task. The staff put in an enormous amount of time. The policy committee of the board put in an enormous amount of time. And we are hopeful that the product that we turn out is far more, you know, we, we have heard what the public has said to this board. And we have tried to transform these policies into being more customer-friendly. And, you know, we, we, we hear the complaints in this room, we hear complaints outside of this room, and we really have tried to take those to heart. So at the next board meeting, God willing, we will, as a board, hopefully approve of these customer service policies so they go into effect. Because they are of no use to you if they are just up here and not actually approved by the board. So I just want to make sure the public is aware of that. And if anybody has any questions about that, everybody knows how to reach me, so don't, don't, don't be shy. You know, we're going to, we're going to continue to do everything we can as a board to, to work with the unified government toward solutions. I mean, that was mentioned tonight, Mr. Gord mentioned it tonight. And it's not lost on us that, you know, that we need to continue working together toward solutions that benefit our community. Despite what some people think, every board member here lives in KCK. Every board member here is a customer of BPU. You know, we, we experience things the same way you guys experience things sometimes. And, you know, I've said it before and I will say it again, I believe that every board member here cares about this community very deeply. And, you know, if we can do things like, you know, begin, you know, an effective stakeholder process for the IRP, that came from the community, that came from stakeholders, that came from people who live here and care about this community just like we do. And if that's something we can do to move forward and improve this utility for the community, you know, by all means, let's do it. So thank you for the engagement. Don't stop engaging. You know, I certainly don't bite. I can't speak for other board members, but I don't bite. So don't, don't hesitate to contact me if you've got questions or, or. So, don't, don't hesitate to contact me if you've got questions or, or you want to talk about any specific issue that we have talked about here tonight or otherwise with BPU that, that certainly I or another board member can assist with. So, that was really long and I did not expect that, Mr. President, my apologies.
We're about ready to cut you off.
Can't believe her, Rob didn't cut my mic. Thank you.
Mary?
I just wanted to say again publicly, I said it at the five o'clock meeting, or four o'clock meeting, but I want to say it again, a big thank you to the customer service group and to the policy committee. I know you've spent a lot of time and I'm glad we're finally going to get to the end of that at the next meeting. And thanks to everybody else that did a presentation tonight and spoke tonight, I appreciate it. Thank you. And happy birthday, David.
I appreciate all the public input tonight as well, and it's, it is, I know it's hard topics that folks are addressing, but this is a public utility and we benefit from hearing from you all. So, as Ms. Rose said, I, I hope everyone stays engaged. I appreciate all the presentations we went through tonight. Again, echo what I said before, all the work that's gone into the IRP process from staff from Black and Beach and then, and now getting some great data from Rocky Mountain Institute and the partners that brought that together. Appreciate that as well. I'm excited about the, the work of the policy committee and the board in bringing forward the new customer service policies. Appreciate staff and fellow committee members and board members, but also want to acknowledge that Rose Mulvaney Henry did above and beyond over my 10 months working on that, you guys for longer, but, you know, taking home incorporating the edits and, and all of that is tremendous work and appreciate that. I want to run through a couple of things from the plethora of public comments tonight because I feel the frustration, and I, I hope you all know that folks on this board do feel a lot of that as well. And part of that is just because of the nature of, of our structure. And I know it can get murky, Rose did a great job of kind of giving some of the background on, on the pilot piece. I just want to run through kind of the notes I took very quickly here on, sort of, what does the BPU get to do, what does, what does the UG get to do? The Unified Government sets the charter for the Board of Public Utilities, so the rules that created this existence and guided, the six of us up here, the general manager, we don't get to change that. As you can imagine, there are probably times when there are things that we might want to change, but that, that doesn't matter. We could take all the votes we wanted, we wanted to on this board, it would not change that because that power falls with the UG. The UG sets the pilot rate, we, we don't get to do that as well. The UG has the power to assess all those other fees on the bill. We, we are required then to pass those on. We hear you on that, we've been pushing for change on that, but we don't get to make that decision. There's one side, you know, in this government equation that gets to make that, it's the UG, not the BPU. The UG provides our legal representation, that is not something that this board gets to change. We can, on our end, seek efficiency in the way that we do things, right? We can seek that, we're going through a budget process, we've been hearing good presentations, the work that we've been hearing and receiving on the IRP is to be as efficient as we possibly can be for the customers of the BPU moving forward, for our neighbors. We can encourage energy efficiency. I know a lot of the concerns that we hear from individual customers are about, you know, I am a, a small house and my bill is this high. And there are two components of that, right? One is the rates, and that goes back to our efficiency and our budgeting, but the other is energy usage and trying to provide everything we can to help on, on the usage side because if, if it's, you know, the house doesn't have some of the energy efficiency things, those are going to make the bills higher. We can seek grant money from state and federal organizations so that there are dollars coming into this utility that don't come directly from ratepayers, and we are trying to be focused on that at every opportunity. And we can be compassionate and try and provide the best service possible. And again, want to acknowledge the excitement about some of those customer service policies that certainly don't solve every, every piece of that. There are real trade-offs in this work. It costs money to, you know, provide water and electricity. I wish, I wish that there were ways around that at the end of the day. If, if we produce it, we don't, we don't get to bill anywhere else for it. And, and I also acknowledge, same is true for the Unified Government, right? They, they have a budget and they have to fund it one way or another. I appreciated some of the comments before that, you know, that perhaps there are structural ways of looking at how each of us collect those funds, but at the end of the day, we, we all have to fund our budget. So, that can make it really frustrating when we're talking about where does the pilot fee come from, because one way or the other, we know it's all, it's coming from all of us in the community, right? And the same is true on, do we bill the Unified Government for their utilities? We can, you know, if we do that, then that's a budget hole that they have to fill, and they also go to the same folks that we do to pay all those. So, I know these are big items, they're, can be incredibly frustrating. Just know that, I think I could safely say the six of us up here, and I'm sure folks in the UG too, feel that frustration. I can only speak for myself in this, that I am a new board member. This is, you know, month 10 on the job, Mr. Wakes is, is the same here. In fact, you know, two-thirds of this board is new over, what, the last five years or so. We are in the midst of a general manager search and hiring a new general manager. We really appreciate all the years of service from Bill Johnson, but there are, you, you have new folks at the table with this, this entity. And I suppose as, as all this back and forth goes on between, you know, UG comments, BPU, pilot, all of those things, I think my, my ask for our neighbors, our community members is to, to give this group and, you know, a new general manager that we're, you know, excited about that process, the opportunity to engage with you and move things forward in a way that, that works for everyone as best we can. Again, we know there are not perfect answers to all of these things, but I'm usually fairly short-winded in these comments, and I thought might, might break that trend a little bit tonight, so I appreciate your indulgence.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Groneman. It really is simple. The only way to balance the budget is one of two ways. Increase revenue, cut spending. Got to do one of, both of them involve a lot of work. The UG has to make a decision which one they're going to do. Finding a way to cut costs, finding a way to increase revenue, I think that's what they're really trying to work on. And, but as far as we're concerned, we want to help with that process, and we ask for your indulgence. Thank you so much to those of you presented tonight, particularly the work involved in the customer service policies, through our customer service staff, as well as our policy review committee. Thank you so much for your diligent work and toil in that effort. And thank you, public, for coming. As, as we stated earlier, we don't have this often, but your words to us is very valuable. Please talk to us whether you wait till Wednesday night, first and third Wednesday night, or whether you see us at any time during the week. Don't hesitate to contact us, we will talk to you. We won't say anything different to you on that day than we will in these meetings. So, we'll be glad to share that information with you. Don't have to wait till these meetings to, to find out information. Thank you.
Senator Haley?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, members of the board. I think I'm going to probably be one of the briefest for board comments this evening, which will be potentially unprecedented, right? No, and I genuinely want to echo some of the comments that have been made by each of, each of, of our members here, thanking those that came out to express from, from the public as they have, especially about this pilot and what it does mean, how it will be situated, reminding that tomorrow, although we can't attend, there will be a meeting that we could probably look at and see what's, what the UG is thinking regarding the payment in lieu of taxes, the onerous issue that has surrounded that. So, also to say, those that came out to talk about the access for customer service, I, like many members, do hear from people all the time, even today, some who have come out today about being able to directly access customer service about an issue or issues, usually regarding whether or not they're being disconnected or, that, again, I plead with the opening of the lobby, not by having to call in, but by coming in and knocking on the door and not knocking on the glass to disturb security who can't answer their question, but to access someone there. That is my plea, especially as we go through this budgetary process, that we find from personnel, someone to be, and to staff our lobby again, so we don't clog as much time as we have. We shouldn't have to do that. We're a sophisticated, first-class utility, and we should have direct public service through the lobby. Finally, thanking customer service and the policy committee that worked as they did to bring about the policies that will be changed. I'm on this board because customer service and the policies that were there just were beyond the pale, they were unacceptable. And the board didn't respond, the staff didn't respond, KCC, the Kansas Corporation Commission, was not able to assist us, and I determined that I was going to be here to be a voice for problems that I had and that others had. And so, I am appreciative that some of our customer service, looking at phantom charges that, that have been plopped on our bills out of the blue, would not lead to disconnections or fees and deposits and other inequitable issues. Thank you for your work, those that were on the policy committee. And Lori, I know I could hear Bob Mylan saying, "Wow, we're moving on to A+." Bob Mylan saying S&amp;P, he was big on our report, glad to see that. And Andrew, we will miss you unless you come back. Finally, between now and the next meeting, there's a real big event that is coming up, and I don't have to tell you all what that is. And I meant to thank Carrie Gooch and Noreen Spears and Ty Gorman for talking to, to the issue as well, each of you for doing that as well as ourselves. Appreciate your being here. And the big event coming up, and I hope that we'll all remember, that is crucial, not just at the national level, but at the local level, to make our voices heard, not just at meetings, but between now and the 5th, to make sure that we resonate and make it heard between now and the next election, which we hear a whole lot about, but we forget how people are paying close attention to where there is participation within a precinct, within a county, and to urge everyone to participate in this election, as I know many of us are going to be participating next year in our local as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Point of order. I just want to correct, Senator Haley, the meeting tomorrow night at the Unified Government, we, the public is able to attend it, including us as members of the public.
On the 5th floor, but no.
But we can't bring comment, we just, you know, we'll just be, you know, we'll just sit there and add to the crowd.
I just, I just wanted to clarify.
The crowd size, right.
Just wanted, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Wow. I'm going to be very brief. I might just say that I, you know, reiterate everything that's been said, I, you know, I, I too, I feel the frustration that from, comes mainly from miscommunication and misunderstanding of, of the pilot, and the miscommunications cause nothing but frustration, you know, and it's, it's not, it's not necessary. And trying to get the word out about, you know, things like the pilot is almost impossible because we don't have a local, local newspaper really anymore. So, we need to do a better job as a board to reach out, do outreach, and, and maybe do more explanation of what, what actually the, the pilot is, and maybe try to cure some of those miscommunications and misunderstandings. And, you know, the, the fact that it was, it was brought out that this, this was going to cause, you know, that the, the doing away with the pilot was going to be a relief to the bill payers, it was miscommunication. It was, it's not going to, you know, you just, it was moving it from one place, it would just be moving it from one place to another because they're still going to collect, you know, their $37 million, they're not going to, you know, that's their budget, and they need that money, and, you know, it's, it's frustrating. But, I'd say positive things this evening, standard and poor rating being, going up to a positive is great. The turnout from the public and the input from the public is, is great. You know, Ty and RMI and the, those people, we, we definitely, you know, want to tie all that together with what we've, what we've got through, from Black and, Black and Beach and those, those people, and have that whole picture that we can look at and, and move forward on. So, that's, that's, that's great. The thing that's not great is Andrew Ferris is leaving, you know.
He's not gone yet.
He's not gone yet. I don't know, I haven't, this was the first, this came as a total shock to me, I hadn't heard that before. So, I wish, wish him well in, in whatever his endeavors are in the future. And I might just throw this out, this weekend, Saturday, is the Lineman, Lineman's Rodeo. We will have a team out competing, there'll be people from all over the, the country coming in. As a matter of fact, there are even some international teams, I think, that come in from, I don't know, years past, Jamaica and Puerto Rico and Canada and different places. And it'll be quite a happening out at the, the Wyandotte County Ag Hall of, Hall of Fame, the pole yard out there, and you can't miss it. Go out, if you're right in behind the amphitheater or where the Renaissance Festival's going to be taking place. It's a, it's a sight to, it's a sight to see, it's very interesting, and be out there rooting on our, our, our team. I've been out there the last few years. This year, I might be a little bit late because Mr. Johnson and I have a public forum at the Community College that was been, that the mayor, the mayor has invited us to participate in. So, it's from nine to 11 at the Community College, and we'll see how that works out. So, again, thanks, everybody, for all of your participation. Thanks to my fellow board members, they're doing a great job, and, as they, yes.
I just failed to mention this earlier, but I want to congratulate Amber and her team for getting the BPU connection out, and it's, should be starting to hit mailboxes today, and, and over the next couple of days, everybody should have a fresh copy of our new, new BPU connection.
Mr. President, real quick, because you reminded me about the Lineman's Rodeo, sorry about that. Um, yeah, just wanted also to give a shout-out to Amber, was over at Bonner Springs City Council meeting on Monday night. The mayor in Bonner Springs did a proclamation recognizing the, the rodeo, and, which, which was awesome, but obviously BPU's, you know, marketing communications team were there, so thank you for that, appreciate it. Sorry, you got to cut my mic off.
Well, okay, that's all I have.
I move we adjourn.
We had that motion, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yeah, second. Angie, roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.